Do I have sound?
I can hear you, Jeanette.
Oh, okay.
Just Paul Creaker.
See, I can't hear anything. I don't know if nobody's talking or just can't hear.
Yeah, everybody's muted.
Okay. I can see planning this chat.
It works, Paul. Thank you.
Is that you, Bruce?
Bruce, yeah.
Yeah, good, good.
I'm getting myself to be reminded of that.
You're probably muted.
Yeah.
If any of the planning commissioners were wondering, I think I've been listed as the host for tonight's meeting. And so if you have any questions or anything for me, feel free to let me know. But I'm admitting anybody I see into the meeting from the waiting room. And I have turned off the chat feature so that any, anybody who needs any kind of technical assistance can message me, the host, and see what I can do to help them. But there, there isn't going to be any kind of a, you know, chat for public comment. Just an FYI.
So how will you take public, public comment then?
So that'll, that'll have to be up to you guys. If you want to just allow people to unmute themselves, or they might be able to do some kind of, yeah, I'm trying to think here, reactions, I think people can do reactions. But that'll be something that you'll want to, to discuss.
Okay.
We have seen that in other planning commissions where you kind of just unmute yourself. And I guess try to do it in an organized way. But I think the chair should be able to see people's hands raising.
Okay, as long as there's some way to not have everybody speaking at once.
Yeah, that's, do we have a quorum here? Steve, I'm just looking here. I see Jeanette and.
Yeah, I see Bren, I see Andrew, John, Jeanette, Wayne.
We're good.
Perfect, all right. Brad, if you want to get us started. Then we can talk about some of these things. So we have it on the record.
All right, sorry, I had some problems getting on here. I don't know if others did. I had to read down a bunch of stuff. Update this thing to get my speakers to work, but. Anyways, like to welcome everyone out to our pre-meeting of the Western Weber County Planning Commission tonight. Sorry, I'm trying to get an agenda pulled up here. Anyways, let's say we got a quorum. Do you want to start? It looks like we're gonna, our pre-meeting discussion is going to be a discussion of Zoom meeting conduct and receiving public comment.
Yeah. In our last meeting, you know, it's, this whole Zoom thing's a trial and error. And we noticed that there was some problems with the chat feature that you wouldn't normally have in a typical meeting. Typically, when we have our meetings, there's a time for the public to make comment. And there's a time for them not to make public comment. And what was happening was there was comments being made through the chat feature throughout the meeting, which was very distracting. And so what we were thinking is that we turn the chat feature off so that we can't have those type of things happening, so that we still keep the typical meeting procedures that we typically have when we meet together. But what would happen is when you open it up for a public hearing or for a public comment, then you as a chair, you can see everyone there and you can ask them to either raise their hand. And you can see that, or you can take the mute feature off so that they can talk. And then, you know, just indicate, you know, the same thing, you have three minutes to share your comments. And I just wanted to get your take on it and some of your ideas and thoughts so that we have a little bit more of an, we don't have that that happened in the last meeting.
Start off, I guess, my thoughts on that. I like the way that we had them put in the chat feature and write down their, type their name in, so we knew who to call on for public comments. But outside of that, yeah, I, I think we shut that chat feature off. There's nothing that they need to type in there outside of just giving us a list of names to call on for public comment. That's my thought. Anyone else?
I agree that we're good having them type their names in. If we could turn it on just long enough for them to do that, maybe give them three or four minutes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, there's another option. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me? Oh, you said, you said, yes, sir. Sorry about that. There's another option that we can enable. When we set up these meetings, we can require authenticated Zoom users only. And that's a little limiting that will require people to set up a Zoom account before they log in. It's not tremendously hard to do, but you know, I'm open to the idea that that might be too cumbersome for the public. But if we did that, that would require essentially that their name be displayed as all of our names are displayed here. And another alternative to that is just to make sure it is announced that in order to participate, they need to raise their hand because there, that is the option in the reactions. In fact, I'll, I'll, let's see, I'm just going to give you a thumbs up here or a hand clap if you could see that, that kind of gives you my reaction. And any one of those, including, let's see, if I can get in here and raise my hand, sorry. Well, it's not very effective when I can't do it right away. Anyway, there's a function right in here where we can have the, the hands raised. So rather than using the chat feature to go through names, we could just go through each of the hands that are raised. If I were to raise my hand, it would push my name up to the top of the list. So you could see everyone with a hand that has been raised. And then we can call on those names that way. We just need to make sure from the beginning that everyone has changed their name to their actual name, if that makes sense.
We've used the raise my hand feature for our meetings and it's worked really well. Even if they don't have their name on it, if you just say the phone number, they know their number and they can just say, no, you're next to speak. So it's worked okay that way without even having them change their names.
Ironically, I can't find the raise my hand feature right now. I wonder if we disabled that. Steve, has that been disabled?
I also see the waving and the hand clap.
If you go to the participants, I think down at the bottom.
Oh, raise hand. There it is.
It's there.
Where?
If you go to the participants, thing on the bottom and click on that, it opens up a box and then it's on there. This is where he's found.
So me and Charlie raised our hands and Scott did for a second. I see.
Hi, everybody. I'm a neighbor. Can everybody hear me? Great. Is it, is this a pre-meeting? Can I make a comment already? Is that acceptable?
No, no, we're in our pre-meeting. We'll open it up for public comment when we get in our regular meeting.
Okay.
So that the chat feature under participants where you raise your hand. Are you all comfortable using that?
Yeah, we can do. But if you turn off, how does it work if you turn off the chat feature?
The person, the person who raises, when you raise their hand, then the person who's the host unmutes the person who's talking.
Okay.
So yeah, the chat feature, the raise hand functions regardless of the chat feature. The chat feature, how we have it set up right now is not enabled for everyone to use with each other. It's only enabled for someone to use with the meeting manager, who is Steve right now. And so you could get in there and you could chat directly with him in which we're intending that hopefully to be the way for someone who's maybe having like audio technical difficulties on their side to get in touch with the meeting manager and trying to troubleshoot that.
That was, Mr. Chair, it might be good to maybe mention that as the meeting starts, that that's what that's for only. Because, you know, if anybody wants to make comments, I'll, I'll see everybody's comments. And so it would be beneficial if that were just left for technical or audio.
So basically, just to clarify that comment, Steve, so we're going to turn the chat feature off. The only person that will see them is you. And so the only reason why they should type something in the chat is if they're having a technical issue as far as audio or something like that. And then as far as the order we're going to go through to receive public comment is going to be, they're going to have to go down and click on participant and, and use the raise their hand. Click that raise their hand button and then that's what we can go through and look at to receive public comments. Is that correct?
That's, that's an option. If we're just talking about chat. Chat only is what I will see, but raise your, raising hand should be an option for anybody. And you as the, as the chair should be able to see that, who else raising their hands? Were you, were you able to do that when others were raising their hand just now?
Yeah.
And so that might be an option, if that's what you'd like to do, is to have anybody who has comments be able to raise their hands. And yeah, I can see that, yeah, really anybody can raise their hand.
Did that work good for you guys?
Yeah, someone who's, who's a, who's someone who is a host has to be able to unmute the people who raise their hand though. So what you would do is just call on them and say, you know, this, this phone number, this name. You're unmuted, you can talk, and then they would start talking.
I think anybody can unmute themselves.
It depends on how the meeting's set up. So if you've set it up so everyone's unmuted, then that's what, then that's okay.
If I try it right now, Commissioner Workon, if I try to, we could just figure that out. Maybe I'll, would it be okay if I tried to just mute you and see if you could unmute yourself?
I can unmute myself. I'm just a nobody, Paul Creaker.
Oh.
I thought Steve, last time that we had, we were able to mute everyone, so we didn't have people to speak into the meeting.
We, we can't, can mute everyone, but everyone still has the option to unmute themselves. Hopefully they're, keep themselves.
The way we've got it set up is, is that the, all of the commission members are listed as co-hosts. And so they are automatically unmuted.
Ah, that's what the co-host option is. Do you guys over there, do you have it, do you have like the premium package? Like, it's like a hundred and eighty dollars a month or something like that?
I have no idea what we've got.
Sounds like listening. I'm going to try to mute Paul to see what happens.
He's muted.
I'm going to see.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now. See if you can mute me.
Okay. All right, I just muted you, Paul. Let's see if you can unmute yourself.
This is Bruce. Can you hear me?
Bruce, we can.
We can hear Bruce. So Steve, I think just from my experience of being the host, you can mute everyone. They could unmute themselves. You cannot unmute anyone without them unmuting themselves. So you can, you could say, you could click on unmute and it'll send a request to that user for them to unmute themselves. That way, if they're having a conversation or, you know, they're in the restroom or something, it stays muted and they're not being intruded on in the privacy of wherever they are.
Right.
And it looks like Paul's not unmuting himself, so maybe he can't do that.
Well, he said he could before.
Yeah, I can unmute myself.
Okay, good, thanks.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think probably just be critical that we ensure that people keep themselves on mute. Maybe that Steve, as the, as the person who's operating the technological side of things, hits mute all anytime, you know, it becomes a problem. But I guess at the end of the day, someone can interrupt, given the subscription to Zoom that we have. And if that becomes an issue, you can always just move to end the meeting, I guess.
Well, it's also similar to someone being disruptive during a physical meeting. We can remove them or, you know, kick them out of the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, that's right. And now that I think about it, as the host, Steve has the ability to remove someone from the meeting. He just needs to go, Steve, it's the dots when you hover over their, their square. It's the three dots up in the corner. You just click on it and you should have the option to remove from meeting or to push back into the waiting room.
Yep.
So I guess, under the threat of being removed from the meeting, everyone should voluntarily keep themselves on mute.
And then we'll check on the next time we meet, if we end up doing another Zoom meeting, doing a co-host and have each one of the planning commissioners as a co-host.
Yeah, that sounds like a great function.
Yeah, for sure. Any other questions, guys, on the meeting format?
Well, I got a question, Director Grover. Be able to go back and meet in person again. The commission's doing it.
Right, there are only three people, so they can social distance. But the pews, the way they're set up there, it's hard for you to set that up so that you guys can be social distancing where you're a larger body. That's, that's the biggest issue. If we went into a different, you know, we could go maybe in the break room in the back, there, the breakout room in the back and, you know, set things up that way. But so far, we haven't had major problems with the Zoom on the Ogden Valley or on the Western Weber. It seems like the only thing we had was this last meeting with the chat feature. And so we're waiting until they change our status with the state to green so that we can do that. But I'm not sure where it's at right now. Looks like it may be going the opposite direction.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Director Grover.
Yeah, I want to bring one other thing up too, and that is with, we're going to have some training in the next, maybe it might be in the next meeting or the following one, but like to talk a little bit about ex parte communication. And, you know, right at the beginning of the meeting, we talked about ex parte. You know, if you have a conflict of interest or things like that. And, you know, I think, you know, if you even have any doubts or any questions, you know, just bring it up and can talk about it. You have legal here to give their input as well. You know, obviously Andrew had no ex parte communication with that. And that was brought up in the beginning of the meeting. And so, you know, he was definitely, you know, kept everything right up above ship and everything like he always does. But, you know, for instance, in the last meeting, it might have been good where Greg was an extra neighbor to the subdivision or in this meeting, Jeanette, where you're an extra neighbor to the, the rezone. Just to mention that, bring it up, you know, so that it doesn't show that, you know, there's any impartiality or anything like that. You know, it's just good to, you know, make sure that we keep everything, you know, as transparent as possible. Thoughts on that?
So ex parte is not really a conversation than it's any situation.
Well, if you have financial gain to benefit from it, you know, as a next door neighbor to it, I don't think you have financial gain to benefit from it. You know, but I think it's just good to, you know, have that out there so we're as transparent as possible.
Well, and it also depends on if it's legislative or administrative too.
That's true.
But there's also the conflict of interest, which it doesn't matter whether it's legislative or administrative, so.
So Matt's going to give some training on that. And it might be in the next meeting or the following one, but just like to, you know, bring that up. And if you don't have any other questions on that, if there's things, Chair or other planning commissioners, we have five minutes to talk about any items on the agenda.
On the share screen, could we make sure things are visible and people can read them? When you share your screen, make sure that the printing is, you know, big enough that people can read it.
It's a good point.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be, hopefully the other planners that are presenting hear that, but that's, that's important. I was going to ask as, as host, if the planning commissioners wouldn't mind putting their full names, if it's possible. Just so it's clear, I guess, for the record, who's, you know, who's talking, if you could rename yourself and put your full name.
Mr. Chairman, also, when it comes to viewing things, so it's viewable, it's going to be challenging for people who are presenting to know exactly what screen resolution or screen size everyone's working with. There is an option for the user to increase the size. When the screen is being shared, as you could see, screens, or Steve's screen is being shared here. So he's getting it and he's amending the size. But if you guys go up to view options at the top, the very first one under view options says Zoom ratio. And if you slide over there and you just click on something. And if you slide over there and you just click on something, uh, that, that's gonna make it bigger, like two hundred, you'll see how much bigger that makes it. I just clicked on two hundred and it made it unreadable because it's too big. I clicked on fifty and it was too small, but if I click on one hundred, it's just right for me. And I think it's supposing that, it says one hundred, uh, is original size. I think it's supposing that that is the size it would be if it was on your laptop at the Zoom resolution that it is. On Steve's.
I see.
And one item that's on the agenda is the rules of order. And I think you may have some questions, why staff put, um, the minutes, um, on the agenda, um, for a special vote when we were gonna be meeting in just, um, another week? And the reasoning for that was that we have an appeal in, um, on that decision and the subdivision of Taylor Landing. And because they had requested that the minutes be approved, um, before our next meeting, that is the reason why we put that on there for a vote. And for you to look at those minutes so that they could continue on with their appeal process. And so I just wanted you to be aware of, you know, you may see this from time to time, but it's not something that we're normally going to do. It was never intended to, you know, hurry and get minutes approved. But because there was an appeal in here, that's why we went through that process. And there is a clause in the rules of order that says that, everyone has to, um, respond back. And then you just have to, have to have the majority vote. And Matt, you wanna maybe just make a quick, um, synopsis of what you changed in there on that item? Matt? Basically, what we did on that is that, um, we have to send that out, but you have a reasonable time. And then we have to still have the majority, um, approval of those minutes. So if, for instance, one person doesn't respond back within that period, as long as we have the majority of the, the vote back in, we can still deem those minutes as approved. Because it was a little difficult trying to get everyone to approve the, or just to give their comments. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, and that's one change we have in the rules of order as well.
So that's why they're back on our agenda, so we just are approving the changes that are made?
That, and then also you asked us to make a few other changes which are included on there from the last time. So we wanted that, those changes put on there in addition to, um, the approving the minutes.
The last time we had our work session was incorrect. Work session time was, was citizen, was incorrect. And then I think the e- email option for, uh, sending for special meetings was added too.
Yeah, we just, we approved it last time, so I just wanted to make.
So those were added, yeah.
What we're approving this time, so.
Sorry, I, I had, uh, I was on, I had a phone call come through, so if there was a question for me, I apologize.
Oh, no, I just briefed him on the changes with the minutes. So, but when we get to that item on the agenda, we can, we can talk about that in more detail.
We got two minutes. Has anybody else got any questions? Commissioners?
So I do have something real quick. Um, on a previous agenda, we did have the minute approval. It was, um, through email, but it just has to be declared in the public meeting. The minutes, the, the minutes from the, I think it was May twelfth meeting are approved.
So I just need to state that, that we approve them through, that we approve those minutes via electronic. I will make a note of that.
One thing the commissioner also needs to be aware of is the notices that were mailed to the residents on the rezone did not have the Zoom information, did not have any information about where and when the meeting was. So that may be a concern that due process is not.
We can address that when we get to that.
Right.
And I can address that.
Okay, so five o'clock. Thanks for making the note here. The other thing, one more thing, commissioners, uh, like we did last time, I think just for the sake of minutes, we'll, we'll do everything. It's kind of a roll call vote on this, just so that, we, uh, we get that. And right now, um, Director Grover, we're down one position, right? So the only commission, everyone's here with us tonight except for Commissioner Bell, right?
That's correct. We have that noticed and so we're trying to get that position filled.
You know, when that closes?
It closes the, um, it's right around the end of June. We're gonna do, um, up, there's two other terms that are up and we're just gonna do them all together.
Hey, commissioners, well, it's five oh one, so I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Western Weaver County Planning Commission. I'd like to thank everyone on our Zoom meeting here and attendants with us tonight. All of our planning commission members are in attendance, except for Commissioner Bell, who he is excused, um, from tonight's meeting. He had prior conflicts. I just wanna make note that, uh, between our May twelfth meeting and tonight's meeting, we, we had to, uh, approve the minutes from the May twelfth meeting via email, which we had approved to do in previous meetings via our planning commission rule of orders. So, um, just wanted to make note of that, that those were approved, um, by the commissioners via email. With the address changes to staff, so. With that, um, I'd just like to start off with, uh, with a pledge of allegiance. So, uh, there's our flag. If everyone wouldn't mind standing up and repeating the pledge with me and, we'll, uh, we'll get going. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. Alright, thank you for that. Next on our items, um, does any commissioners have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications that they would need to declare for items on today's agenda?
Um, I guess I live adjacent to the rezoning property, um, in U L Highlands, but it's not a conflict.
I appreciate that. There's none other than, uh, then we'll move on down our agenda. We do have our, to review and approve our twenty twenty revised planning commission rules of order. I do, last time we did go through this and re- and approve these. But I believe that Mr. Wilkson had a few changes and corrections he had to put in there, as well as, there was a few, um, corrections that, uh, that we as planning commissioners had recommended. And so staff failed to put this back on our agenda for another approval. So, uh, Director Grover, do you wanna cover this, or is Mr. Wilson gonna cover it, or?
Let's have Mr. Wilson, if that's alright, Matt.
Yes, it is. I'm just pulling it up now. I don't have it on, what I, on my iPad here. So if staff, someone from staff could share it, I should have, I don't know if they have that. They should, but.
What page is it on, Mr. Wilson?
Uh, I believe it was page three and four. Sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up here.
Oh, I, it's what's in red in our.
Yes.
In the, okay.
Steve, can you share it on your screen, or do you have it?
Sorry, what am I sharing?
The rules of order.
Yeah, are they just on, are they on here, included in this packet?
Yeah, but you're not on the packet. That's just the agenda there that you have.
Packet, here we go. Um, I don't know if I have them. I, I.
Okay, let me just, I'll send them over to you right now. They should be in the packet.
They were in the packet that was emailed out to, to the planning commissioners.
Okay. I'll just email them to you now, Steve.
Hey Steve, I've got them. I'll share my screen here real quick.
Cool.
It looks like the host needs to allow me to share screen now.
Sorry, I, I don't have a microphone on my desktop computer, so I have to use something else to, to be able to participate and speak.
Maybe we just don't wanna hear from you.
I figured that was it.
Just kidding, Mr. Wilson, we enjoyed it.
Okay, I just sent them to you, Steve.
Is it the track changes, Matt, or is it a different?
Uh, you could do the track changes, cause then you can see what's being added and, uh, what we're recommending to, to take out. So it, it's starting on page four, actually, right at the bottom under, uh, C three, special meetings. There we are, thank you. So there you'll see, um, we've added in that notice two planning commissioners can be given by electronic mail or fax. And, uh, and then we also, um, just cleaned up that next line. Rather than specifically saying, you know, sort of be notified and mailed, we just said sent. We, we like simplicity. So there's that change. And then, uh, under work sessions, uh, we just clarified when a work session for the Western Weaver Planning Commission would be held, which is just after a regular meeting has concluded. And also added in here that a joint work session, of the Ogden Valley Planning Commission and Western Weaver Planning Commission may be held on the first Tuesday of each month at the hour of five P M. That way, allowing the two planning commissions to, I mean, right now, they can do it, but it's just cleaning it up to specifically state that they can do it. That's under, that's on page five under work sessions. And Steve, there's a, the Zoom meeting there is up blocking the rules of order right now on, on the screen here. And if you'll scroll down for me to page five, that, that's where. Sorry.
While he's scrolling down, um, planning commissioners, are you okay if we have a joint work session with the Ogden Valley? They meet, uh, like you see here on the first Tuesday of each month at five o'clock. That way, we can talk about long range issues and we can get input from both commissions at the same time. That was something both the Chair and the Vice Chair. Valley Planning Commission, well, they met with the county commissioners. What's the planning question's flavor on that?
I think it's a great idea. Um, I think there's too many times that staff brings this stuff and it comes to Ogden Valley. But a few changes, well, then we might wanna tweak it a little bit. I think it would just be more efficient if we both met together and, and went through those, uh, work sessions together. And then if, you know, we need to take them to approvals, we can do them approvals, uh, after the work session and the changes have been made in work session. We can, we can make our individual approvals, uh, at our regular, regular scheduled Tuesday meetings.
Are you guys willing to report that on, in July, on the seventh?
I can, yes, I.
I think it's, yeah, I like it for ordinances and things that affect us both, but not for specific things that affect them and not us, or us and not them.
Yes, for sure. It would only be dealing with, um, ordinances and things like that. Um, everything else.
So that, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Rick.
No, I, I interrupted you.
No, you're good. Um, so that, that's one of the suggested changes. And then if we, Steve, if you'd scroll down to page seven, you see one change there. This is for our email. Our email approvals of minutes. We, we just added that, or you've had at least seven days to respond. We're still requiring a majority of the members, but it's similar to a regular meeting. If we're approving minutes in a regular meeting, we're not requiring every person that was there, to be there to approve the minutes, so. Are there any questions?
With that, Mr. Wilson, it just takes a majority of the planning commission members to respond in favor of it, to approve those minutes is what you need?
Yeah, in favor or, or, uh, deny, yeah. But that's, yeah, we're, we're just doing that. So, um, basically, if we have an applicant that's appealing something, uh, they don't have to wait a full month before they can file an appeal. And I believe that sums up the, the changes that, um, we're recommending.
Okay.
Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the rules of procedure as proposed with the changes, as we've discussed.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Uh, any discussion on that motion?
You have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll, uh, we'll call through, um, for vote, um, Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Favero?
Yes.
Commissioner Borkland?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrade?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so that passes. Alright, so next item on our agenda is going to be a consent item. It's gonna be item two point one, D R two zero two zero dash zero two. Consideration and action on a design review amendment to expand the Wynn Co. dis- distribution parking lot. The parking lot expansion area is one point zero seven acres. Director Grover?
This, if you don't have any issues with this, you can just approve it, um, as is. You just need to, if you're recommending how it's being approved, or however you'd like to approve it, make sure that you state the conditions and findings.
We, commissioners, um, The commissioners, um, did you notice any issues with this in your review of your packet? Would you like staff to give any comments or anything on this? Alright, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would approve the consent agenda at this time.
With the findings and conditions of approval as, as shown on the staff report.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Alright, um, start, Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Favero?
Yes.
Commissioner Borkland?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrewotti?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so, uh, our consent items will be approved, um, with the conditions in the staff report. Alright, next item is gonna be an administrative item, it's gonna be item 3.1. It's gonna be CUP 2020-08, Consideration and Action on a Conditional Use Permit, 2020-08, for a night watchman's quarter in the commercials, it's a C2 zone. Um, Director Grover?
Iris Henin from our staff will be presenting this item, and then the applicant, Katrina Gibson. If you have any, any questions, or she, give her some time, and then Iris will explain how it is, or it is not meeting code.
Alright, uh, Iris?
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, just telling me I can't share, okay. Good evening, Commissioners, um, this is an application that, uh, the applicants are requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a night watchman dwelling unit as part of a commercial building for the proprietor or an employee who also will serve as the night watchman. The proposed night watchman dwelling general plan, and the dwelling meets the requirements for two parking spaces with sufficient parking for the commercial uses. The building is already established, so no additional buildings need to be constructed. Um, and in the discussion with this, the gains far outweigh the negative by having a night watchman for this commercial site. The product being sold traditionally at the, um, Country Corners has always been attractive to those who perpetrate criminal mischief. Having the community know that there is a night watchman that is available at all times protects the store, and some of the immediate benefits for the neighbors would be that, um, that, um, there is someone looking out for them. Other game, the other game which is significant is the site will be less commercial, and therefore have less congestion by just having one business as opposed to three businesses. And as some of you know, historically, there has been three commercial units housed in this building, as well as the gas station. It has, at one time or another, had various uses, which have been allowed in the C2 zone. It's been a restaurant, offices for electrical company, and water company, and hair salon in its lifetime. So, this proposal and this proposed application for the Country Corner Night Watchman Dwelling provides living accommodation, also for a family that might not otherwise be able to afford to live in this wonderful area of our county.
Okay, thank you for that, Iris. But that is the applicant on? Ms. Gibson, are you on there with us?
Yes, this is Andrea Gibson.
Hi Andrea, are you representing on this one for us?
Yes, I am.
Alright, do you have anything else you would like to add, um, to this, that Iris gave us?
I think she covered it very well. Um, we have already had an electrical, um, a permit and a gas line permit that have, the electrical's been approved, the gas line, we're upgrading that to fit the, um, building inspector's needs. Um, just three weeks ago, we're closed on Sundays, we had to call the cops three times for a homeless man that was just wandering the area. Um, that's happened repeatedly. Um, we've also had several break-ins, so this would, I think Iris covered the base as well. Um, just if the commission has any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer it.
Alright, Commissioners, do you have any questions on this? For staff or for the applicant?
I saw there was a floor plan on it, but it didn't show where windows are, because I would, I suspect your windows are where you can see out and see things going on in the neighborhood.
Yes, let's, let's see, they pulled that up. There are, um, and as far as I talked to Mike Bosch of the building inspector, you know, the building inspector, there are windows, um, there's a four-by-five window in the bedroom one and bedroom two. Um, there's also, um, windows in the open area at the top of the page, and, um, yes, and then there is open glass doorway entrance.
Alright, any other questions, Commissioners? Alright, uh, hearing none, um, staff, do you have anything else you would like to add?
I think, I think Mr. Wayne, Andrewotti was trying to say something.
Oh, was he?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just have a question, is this gonna be a full-time job, or is it gonna be a person that's just there at the evening, or, or what's your thoughts on that, Mrs. Gibson?
Um, this would more be not a full-time job, but it, we, it would be either a family member living there, or employee living there, that is on, on the grounds when we are closed.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Andrewotti, didn't, uh, didn't see you was trying to jump in there, so.
No problem. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm learning how to use this Zoom thing, so bear with me a little.
Alright, well, if there's no further questions for staff or for, uh, for, uh, the applicant, um, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, I've lost my packet, CUP 2020-08, subject to all staff recommendations.
Hey, I have a motion, do I have a second?
What about findings?
Findings.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Alright, hearing none, uh, call for a vote, Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Favero?
Yes.
Commissioner Borkland?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrewotti?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Iris.
Thanks, Iris.
If I may be excused?
Did, uh, one question, that, I know it's not on the, we're not into that part of the agenda yet, Director Grover, but, uh, last meeting, uh, Commissioner Andrewotti had some questions, he wanted to visit with Iris, are we gonna do that a little bit later in the meeting today, or is that for a different time?
That would be for a different time.
Okay, alright, thanks. Alright, next item on our agenda is going to be a legislative item, it's gonna be item, um, 4.1, it's gonna be ZMA 2020-02. It's going to be a public hearing to consider and take action on a proposal to rezone approximately 4.9 acres of land located at 6224 South, 2225 East, from RE15 to R112. Uh, Director Grover?
Charlie Yurt's gonna be presenting this from staff, and the applicant is Randy Moore, and he will be available for questions. Um, this is a public hearing, so you will need to open and close the public hearing, um, and go through that process, and then bring it back to the commission for a deliberation.
Thank you, Director Grover. Um, Charlie, you there with us?
I'm here, can you hear me and see me?
We see you rezoned.
Alright, well, uh, maybe you could see me in the little square off to the side, maybe not. Uh, let's go through, uh, the presentation here, I've also got the packet open. Um, I just barely sent you guys, just in case you're relying on, uh, the, the report that I sent out to you before. Uh, there was something funky going on with some of the headers, uh, and so I, I resent that out there, so you could actually clearly see the headers, uh, including the page numbers, uh, and whatnot. There's one other correction, I, I know I made an error in the, um, staff recommendation. Um, I'll, I'll cover that when we get to it. Um, I probably made a number of other errors, so forgive me for those, but I'll, I'll correct the ones that I think are gonna be relevant to any kind of motion you guys choose to make. So, um, just as a, uh, as a, as a quick starter to this conversation, um, I wanted to discuss a little bit, um, about the role of the planner, and, and what it is that we're, um, supposed to do, uh, under typical settings. Um, as you can see in the staff report, I, I give a couple paragraphs tribute to, uh, that role, uh, which is essentially to go into a community and work with the community to create a common vision and a common plan for that community. Um, and then that common vision and common plan is in turn intended to be applied to the community, and, and the way that it mostly gets applied to the community is by providing guidance for, uh, future decision-making, or the decisions that the, um, legislative body is going to make, or the planning commission, or even staff will make over time. Uh, the UNTO Highlands area has a plan that's really old, we know that, because we've talked about this property, um, in the, in the recent half-year or so. Um, it, it was developed in 1970, and it was intended to be a 20-year plan, so someone could argue, maybe it expired in 1990, but technically, nothing has been adopted to replace it, so it is still the existing plan. As I conducted analysis of this, my first thought was, this is an old plan, why would anyone give deference to it? Um, that's what I went into it with. As I got diving into the plan, and I got diving into the specific property and how it relates to the plan, I started seeing things that, um, as a staff planner, I was, I was unwilling to distance myself from, because somebody put this plan together with meaning, i- it is intended to have meaningful application to this community. Um, one thing that I did hear, and I don't want to discredit any of the voices involved in the dialogue, all the voice, the voices are very important, um, because they are affected, uh, as, as local landowners by the decisions that, that are being made. Um, as I was listening to them in regards to the last time this project was brought to the planning commission, um, I heard a lot of, um, assertions that the plan is irrelevant because it's old. But I'm curious how many of those assertions were, were made after, uh, reading the plan, and determining what of it is not relevant versus what is relevant. What is clear to me is that what has been built out as today, uh, to date, doesn't comply with the plan. The plan anticipated having, um, 10,000 to 12,000 square foot lots, or even smaller, that even anticipated, it, it anticipated having the R2 and R3 zone in the area, which both of those allow for, um, duplexes. And so, um, 15,000 square feet, RE, the E stands for estate, so residential estate, 15,000 square foot lot sizes wasn't anticipated when that plan was put together, however, if you look at the dates that each of these, uh, subdivision lots were created in the area, um, they're right around that same timeframe, and so, for whatever reason, um, and I don't have the complete record, and so maybe someone from the public, uh, who was here at that time, um, can help us understand it a little better. Uh, but for whatever reason, those subdivisions were plotted at a larger, at a larger area than what the general plan, um, recommended. And so the land use element of this, uh, maybe, of the general plan, maybe up, uh, for discretionary questioning. Um, I didn't feel like it should unilaterally be my place as a staff planner to take that plan and upend it. But as a planning commission, and as being informed by the public, um, if there's consensus on how the plan can be applied or not be applied, or, or whether it even should be applied, um, that's, that's purely up to your discretion, uh, planning commissioners, and ultimately, the county commissioners' discretion when they get to making the final decision here. Um, just a reminder that, uh, this is a legislative item, so, uh, your, um, action today, whether it be for, against, or to table, um, is a recommendation to the county commission, not an approval or denial. And, and as that, um, I think it, it falls on you guys, as the citizen advisory community, to determine what parts of the plan is applicable and is not. My review is, um, strictly, uh, in line with what the plan says. Um, there was a lot of planning efforts done at the time, um, and, uh, I feel like we need to have a much bigger dialogue with more than the, just the neighbors right here where this, um, parcel is, that's being requested to be rezoned, but bigger dialogue with the entire UNTO Highlands area to find out how everything should fit together at the end run. Um, and my, uh, my analysis is primarily as it relates to streets, not necessarily land uses. Um, but, uh, moving on, we've got, uh, I'm gonna give you, uh, the overview of zoning, I give you a, a table, um, in your packet to explain the differences, um, in, uh, each of these zones. I'm not gonna go through each of these tables in detail, but I'm gonna, but, uh, highlight a few different, uh, elements that I, I think are essential to know. Um, the RE15 zone, you can see here, requires 15,000 square feet per lot, and that's the zone that currently applies. Uh, R112 requires 12,000 square feet per lot, and R110 is 10,000 square feet per lot, with 100 feet, 90 feet, and 80 feet of frontage respectively. As you get going down through the zoning standards, um, R110 has a front setback and a rear setback of 20 feet. Um, R112, uh, everything else from R110 and everything else from R112 is exactly the same as it is from the RE15 zone. Aside from that frontage, or see that width, that area, and then that 20 feet from the R110 zone, excuse me. When you look at the different uses that are allowed, or not allowed, permitted, conditionally permitted, and not permitted, um, we get this table that you have here, uh, as Exhibit E in your staff report. Um, you could see that, uh, under agricultural and animal uses, agriculture is allowed, same as the, um, uh, RE15 zone, but when you get down into those animal uses, that's where things get a little bit more strict. Um, animals and fowl kept for family food production, chinchilla raising, um, stabling and corralling of horses, um, raising and grazing of horses, cattle, sheep, goats, et cetera, um, would not be allowed in the R112, in the R1 zones. Uh, however, take note that, um, items like chinchilla raising, farms devoted to the hatching and raising of chickens, turkeys are fowl, and raising and grazing horses and cattle in the RE15 zone are only allowed with, uh, a greater acreage, so chinchilla raising 40,000 square feet, and then five acres for the other two. Um, I don't know that we have anyone raising chinchillas in this area, or in Weaver County in general, but, you know, just in case, that's in our code for some reason. Um, moving on to residential uses, come on, um, sorry about that. Uh, you could see that, uh, by and large, um, all the things that are allowed in the RE15 zone are also allowed in the R112 and R110. Um, you've got a couple of differences down here, you got residential facilities for persons with a disability, and residential facilities for elderly persons, which oftentimes elderly persons includes persons with a disability. Our code is, um, wrong, uh, in this respect, and when I say wrong, I mean it's wrong in the respect of, um, the, um, uh, Americans with, with Disabilities Act, the ADA Act. Um, so it doesn't comply with federal standards, it also doesn't comply with state. So it doesn't comply with federal standards. It also doesn't comply with state standards. This is actually something we are focusing on as we amend the general uses. You can't discriminate against people with disabilities or elderly persons when it comes to housing. So to require a conditional use permit as opposed to a permitted use, if all of those other residential facilities or residential buildings in a neighborhood is allowed by permitted use, then a residential building for persons with a disability or elderly persons is also de facto a permitted use. So you can't make that discrimination anymore. We used to. Getting down through some of the public and quasi-public uses, you see a lot of these things are the same. You've got public utility substations. Those are all the same. I should have marked those the same. I apologize. Cemeteries, not allowed for whatever reason, the R 120 zone, or excuse me, the R 112 zone, but they are allowed in the R 110 zone. Educational institutions allowed in, in the smaller zones, but not in the RE 15, which exists now. Child daycare or nursery allowed in the RE 15, but not in the smaller zones, the R 112 and R 110. Same with greenhouse and all the way down the bottom, small wind energy system. So those are the differences and you can see in between the the differences, all the similarities that are there. So when it comes to determining what is harmonious with the existing uses of the area, what I see are some animal uses and then a handful of these other uses that we listed that are different between the RE 15 and the R 112 or R 110 zone. And then the lot size, that's the biggest difference I see. So I think by and large, the two can exist or coexist by each other with limited disruption to a harmonious community. However, there is something to be said for folks who feel like they moved into an area that has a little bit more elbow room. And some of those smaller zones just don't feel the same. So the question is, is this truly harmonious? Just to look at the lot sizes really quickly, these are two scale squares. So the differences between the RE 15, R 112 and R 110 zone. So lot size allowed, we already went over this, 15, 12 and 10. Minimum lot width gives you 190 and 80. And then their respective depth, which we don't have a minimum lot depth, but if you're going to get the acreage, it's got to be something. And you can see those numbers here at 150, 133 and 125 for those zones. Looking at the yard area, this is where things get a little different. So in the RE 15 zones, you got your front at 30 feet, your side at 10 feet and your rear at 30 feet. By the way, the side setback needs to be 24 feet combined if you're looking at both sides. So if you've got 10 feet on one side, it's 14 on the other, or maybe it's 12 or 12 or 11 and 13. I'm doing math in my head. Sorry about that. Looking at the R 112 zone, same, it's just a smaller lot. And then in the R 110 zone, that's where you see the 20-foot front and rear. And that gives you your buildable area there. And looking at the minimum buildable area, you could see the differences per lot. So we could look at lot sizes until we're blue in the face, but at the end of the day, how much of that lot can you fill up with buildings? And it usually it's the filling up of the area with buildings that lends to the perception that things are more heavily packed in as opposed to lot sizes. It's just when you're driving down the road, unless everything is clearly marked with a fence, you don't always know where that, that property line is, but you can tell the difference between the distances between the houses. So just a, just a bigger picture of that. So looking at existing zoning, this is what you have. We've got an existing R 110, which I think was approved last year about this time. An existing R 110 up here, a little bit off of skyline, this drive is skyline here. And I apologize about not labeling the streets. I did that with intent as we're looking through just to have a conceptual discussion about the bigger picture as opposed to a pointed discussion about the, the smaller picture. And then we'll kind of narrow it back down to the smaller picture. So the subject property, the gentleman came in and asked for R 110. The last time he was here, that was before he purchased the property. Moore Homes has, has now purchased the property from the LDS church. And I believe, and Mr. Moore can speak for himself, he is on the call today, and he does have a small presentation for you as well. I believe that he will be developing the property regardless of whether or not this rezone happens. It just depends on, the outcome of this depends on how many homes he can get there. If he were to rezone as requested, it would go to the R 112. So we have a kind of a smattering of different zones in the area, but all of which would be in compliance with the general plan. So this is the future land use map for, from 1970. So I guess we could say it's the current land use map or it should be if we had applied the future land use map. And where you can see the subject property down in here, this is where you get the difference between the low density, I can't zoom in, I guess, the low density area shading. And then you look at Colby Road, which runs up in here and then to the north and the east of that closer to the mountain side, you've got very low density, which is the RE 20 zone or, or smaller, or excuse me, or larger lot sizes. This is the area transportation plan of the 1970s map. And so I run through an analysis of the transportation plan just to get a feel for what it is we're looking at this request. It's going to be really easy to say, this is just a single parcel. Why are we looking at the whole area? I felt like it would be disingenuous, given how old the plan is, to just take a look at the single parcel. Because the plan may recommend, you know, one thing or another, but if it's not the right time and it's not the right place, it's not the right question. And so we shouldn't be giving a rezone if it's not the right time or place, despite what the plan says. And that's a legitimate decision to make and something for you guys to consider for your final decision. So as we look at this area, what I did was I just, I tried to evaluate how well did the community, did the county and did the developers do at following the plan when it comes to transportation? So what you see in this map here is a really simple description. And actually I had something that was a little easier to read, but all the green lines you see, those are, are roads that line up with what was planned in 1970. So you can see we didn't, you know, we weren't unsuccessful in making those, those, implementing those streets. The red lines you see are roads that were planned that are no longer possible due to the amount of development that's going on there. It's just, the county always has the ability through eminent domain to build more roads, but it doesn't make sense. It's not financially feasible. There are other connections that can be made and nobody really likes to talk about eminent domain because it's a really hard thing to get through and it's not very fair, in my opinion, for, for private landowners. And so that wouldn't even be something to discuss other than mentioning, if we really, really, really wanted to implement the plan, here it is. However, other alternatives, alternative connections have already been made, as you can see. The red spots here, these are so solid red, the dashed red are missed opportunities that have been plotted over already and they're not going to be there in the future. They won't be there. The solid red, those are streets that showed up that weren't planned. And so trying to compensate for some of those missed opportunities, you get some of these streets. I was going to provide a graphic. I just didn't have time to make it. That shows what kind of missed opportunities we had and how that impacts the connectivity of the community. Folks who live in this area may find that the connectivity is just fine. They love it how it is. Maybe some of the dead end roads, some of the cul-de-sacs and whatnot is the exact reason why they purchased here. Planning commissioners, as you know, as we've been working on redeveloping our subdivision code, we've talked a lot about street connectivity. Everything from the health, safety and welfare impacts to the economic vitality of a community to just playing the, the community fabric is increased when, when, when quantifying quality of life. It becomes increased when you have more community connections where the kids can connect to their peers or their schools or their activities without having to go long distances, without having to jump in, you know, the soccer van and be driven around. You know, one missed opportunity that I'm sad about is this link right here. And you guys will recall the rezone that we worked on with Mountain View Estates a little while back. We heavily considered needing that connection. And at the end of the day, decided not to give it because this intersection here did not align well with that intersection there. And so to say that that was in compliance with the plan just, just wouldn't have fleshed out. But since this went in, we've heard from a lot of moms and dads in this area. We did require a trail connection here. And there was some debate as to whether or not that would even be implemented. But we've heard from a lot of folks in the community who want their kids to be able to walk down here and get to school as opposed to jumping in the car and driving. It was a good half mile or greater distance to come all the way around and then go to the school. Those are the kind of connections that when, when we're, we as planners are looking for opportunities are important because they are meaningful connections for the people who live here as time goes by. Although that discussion is not always popular when you're talking to folks who currently live in a cul-de-sac or on a dead end road because there is a charm for sure of the perception of exclusivity when it comes to living on a, a public street that really is you and your neighbor's street. Looking at the roads that are existing, this is what has been executed. Going, going back to this really quickly, you could see some of the, these guys here, they're just intended to highlight for your attention. They kind of look like explosions. That's not supposed to be what they are. Those are areas where roads go to a dead end. But you could see in the plan where they were never intended to be a dead end road. So this is our subject area. This is the RE 15 area. I don't do a lot of analysis on what's in the RE 20 zone at all. This dark area is currently owned by UDOT. And I think we all know that at some point in time, US 89 right here will be a freeway. The debate for UDOT is what do you do once you get up further down the road to Harrison? Do you take the freeway up Harrison or do you take the freeway down US 89? And that's a question for them for 10 years down the road. What you see here are slopes over 25%. I thought it'd be important to discuss because as we talk about developability of this area in the future, there is a limitation when it comes to slopes. It's very less likely you'll get full zoning potential because of the slopes. You've got to build roads around those and that it's more costly to build homes on these slopes. But keep in mind, it's not impossible. In fact, if we were to go up a little bit higher on the hill and analyze the 25% slopes, I think we'd find quite a few where homes have been built. I, I I have a, an image I wish I could have located for this slideshow of a development at the mouth of Little Cottonwood Canyon. It's called the Tavashi Estates, I believe. And in order to get access to it at a grade 10% or less, which was required by Salt Lake County, they had to build a corpse screw driveway that rounded itself, overlapped itself and then elevated itself to an upper shelf area where they had 20 acre parcels up there. I spoke with the developer personally a few years back and he said that that thing pretty much made him go broke before the lots could sell, before the market collapsed. But it's, it's coming back up online now and they've got quite a few homes being built and there's 20 acre estates. And he said he spent a couple, I think it was close to $5 million on that driveway. So it is possible to develop the steep slopes, but it's, it's less practical for sure. We looked at the vacant lands in the area just to see what can the future actually offer the community? I think it's really important for the community to look at things like this, these kind of vacant areas because these are going to be the next areas that are coming, are going to come exactly where we are now, asking for some kind of a development approval at some time in the future. Now I have spoken with at least three of the landowners of these larger parcel areas in, in the area. And two of the three have said that, you know, they'll develop over their data body. One of them was getting up there in age. And so it's important to note that as we look at the future of the area, there are going to be future accessors and assigns of these properties. And so we can't depend wholly on a current landowner's will to, to keep it as it is. Got to think about what's going to happen in the future. A lot of folks look at planning as if this is the county forcing development on them. And planning commission, I think you guys know, but maybe I'm saying it for the benefit of those who are participating. This is not the county forcing development. This is the county planning for development because landowners choose to develop. And if we don't think about how things work together, we're just going to get frustrated outcomes in time. I also pulled out these yellow parcels here. Most of them are built on, they're not vacant parcels, but they're underdeveloped. Some of them, they're all in the RE 15 zone, but they're all larger, in some cases much larger than 15,000 square feet. If you're looking over in these two clusters over here, I'm kind of on the fence on whether or not anyone can squeeze any more houses in there. May not be able to. And I don't know if the landowners over there would ever have any desire, but again, you never know what's going to happen in the future and who the landowners may be. These guys right in here, most of those are much greater than the existing zone of 15,000 square feet. A few of them over an acre. And I've had a conversation with at least four of those landowners talking about the potential of doing exactly what the city did right across the street, which is right across the street, they have 1,300 square foot townhomes. And so I think that by itself, if all the landowners came together, could pretty easily provide a benefit for moderate income housing for the area. It can go into the city, so it's not a part of the unincorporated area. It's getting all the city services it needs. And it can enhance the value of those properties for those landowners. So that, I'm sure when they moved in, they weren't thinking about townhomes right across the street. And so if they would, you know, wanted to enhance their value and get a little bit more development potential out of it, they can sell it at a much, much greater value and, and move somewhere that suits their needs a little better. Okay, so plugging that into existing zoning in the area, you've got the R 110 zone up here, like I mentioned, R 110 here. Whatever the planning commission chooses to do here and then all these other parcels that have potential for development. And if the general plan was implemented the way that it is suggested, you could easily make a decision like this, suggest that this whole area could go towards that R 112 or R 110 zone and be effectively executing that plan. Again, that's all with the caveat that the community as a whole wants that plan to be executed. The parcels that this overlaps where they've already been developed to the full development potential, so they're fully built out, they're not going to be affected as much by the rezone. When it comes to things like, I did have an individual who commented about not wanting to lose animal rights. If you've got 15,000 square feet and you've got lawful use of animals on your property, for example, I believe our code specifies how many horses or cows or large animals like that you can have per square foot. As long as you're not over that threshold and you've already established that, right? You're grandfathered, the county can't come and require you to give, give up your horses. You get to keep those as long as you, as long as you want to have them or until you voluntarily abandon that use. All of the other homes that are in the area that aren't being used for that purpose, I don't see how a rezone to the R 110 or R 112 will hurt them or affect them negatively at all unless you're considering the development potential of some of these open spaces has harm. Sometimes when people start talking about changing zoning potential on other people's property, it gets to be sensitive and I want to be, I want to be sensitive to that sensitivity. And I just wanted to make sure it was clear that I just don't see this being even noticeable for those landowners except for maybe the additional density of these undeveloped lands. So plugging that into the overall zoning map, I mean, the map would effectively look like this. In my staff report, I offer a positive recommendation for the rezone with some conditions. Not necessarily for all of this. Again, I narrow it down to just talk about this property here. But I bring out the analysis of all of this because there is a direction that the general plan suggests to go. It is something like this. In fact, it would suggest that the whole excuse me. The whole light yellow area turned to a dark yellow. But again, it's going to be negligible effect on those who already have been built out to the full standard. Taking a better look at connectivity and the links that are in existence now. You got those little exploding marks. But taking a closer focus on each of these areas. I mean, it's possible to provide effective connections as anticipated by the general plan. Again, just to make it very clear, trying to be very cautious. This isn't suggesting anyone should be rebuilding roads through anyone else's property. This is looking for opportunities for individual landowners to consider making community connections when they choose to develop. So those connections could be offered. Focusing on this area here. That kind of perhaps a little cul-de-sac that then connects in through here can be offered. I have spoken with the landowner of this property. He doesn't want to maximize his density when he develops at this time, but he is considering the possibility of developing. And then looking at our subject area, and this is one of the bigger areas areas to consider here. We've got a couple of challenges. So you've got this line here that comes in to a dead end, whereas all these other cul-de-sacs you could see were planned dead ends. This one just comes into a dead end to a property that currently has a home on it. There's currently a home over here in the corner. And then there's a couple of homes down a private drive as you go down the hill here. And then this would be the new road that Mr. Moore would build into his subdivision. And if he brings in even a cul-de-sac or even just a stub that goes to the property here, and this one comes to the property here, there's an essential link right there that would be missing without having a good dialogue or discussion with this landowner. He did, this landowner, I don't know if he's on the call right now, but he did submit written comments for you guys to look at where he's really not interested in seeing the connection go through. So I think that's important to consider. The general plan does talk about that connection. It only talks about it. So it basically says this road would come down here. It would come across and then connect into Eastwood. So Wasatch to Eastwood connection. What it currently does is it comes down Wasatch and then makes a curve. And then goes up, I forget, I forget the name of the street, but then goes up the street and then makes a connection there. So you can easily say, well, you know, the connection has been made as planned by the general plan. It just got made in a different location. And that that's an easy answer and a great finding if you want to go in a different direction with the staff recommendation is. The plan also anticipates this road would come down and go straight. And then ended a cul-de-sac here. And so as we look at this area, this was intended to be a four way intersection when the plan was created in 1970. This guy right here has been a challenge for quite some time. The plan did anticipate a triangular shaped intersection. The folks from the area will probably be able to say better than I can whether or not this intersection poses a problem. But according to our traffic engineering analysis, this has long been overdue for reconstruction. It's possible to reconstruct it now so that one of these roads come to a 90 degree angle into the other. It's just a matter of effectively doing it. But as we look at opportunities, there's a there's a larger piece of property right in this area where if this were all connected, it would make a lot of sense just to keep on going into into a loop. And I want to put a big caveat there in case the landowner of that property is is here or or here's of the discussion. This is not a suggestion that the county punch a road through their property without their will, not whatsoever. It's hopefully a suggestion to help them if they ever desire to develop their land to get better frontage that can open things up better for them to develop as well as offer the community a better outcome than this intersection right here. Let's see. So there you go. And and if we did that, maybe you would, maybe this would terminate in a cul-de-sac or something like that. Again, this is very high arching ideas, not, you know, any kind of requirement or direction. Just trying to look at things from what a general plan perspective could be if we were to relook at things today. There's a lot of steep area in here. I did go out and walk the terrain. There's a there's a roadway that comes off of this cul-de-sac here, private dirt road that kind of goes up in this ravine and kind of comes back again to this property here. Looks like it grazes just past the church property that is right there. I think that a road connection through here with slopes of less than 10% is possible as long as you're going diagonal to the grade. Not to say it's needed. But there is a lot of development potential down here, and so the landowners can potentially look at that as a as a possibility for the future. So squaring off this intersection here and then just looking at those potential ideas as we move forward and other ideas ideas for landowners to to open things up. There's actually a development proposal on this property right here that does end in a cul-de-sac. Right now, I don't know if the landowner is still interested in developing. I think it kind of fizzled out a little bit because of the expense of developing on the hillside. But you never know when that's going to come back in. It's just a matter. When you get to these little ravine areas that have a steep slopes, they're also more exclusive and secluded from others and and can become really enticing when it comes to talking about the economic costs or value of those. So just looking at the overall, if the connections like this were made, you'd have a great little loop road that provided better connection from neighborhood to neighborhood, which then gives those benefits that I mentioned before. And that's a that's a view of that just in the context of existing zoning or the potential of future zoning here in this area. Okay, so with that in mind, I, you know, planners, we get teased for sticking our head in the cloud and and thinking about the impossible as being possible. So some of that may be wholly irrelevant. But if we were to go through a general plan process today, we would probably start with a framework like that. Go to the public and start asking a lot of questions to figure out what the common consensus is on the future of the area. And given that our plan was is at least 50 years old, I didn't feel comfortable doing anything less than that kind of an analysis here. Okay, so I've got five different alternatives for you guys. The the alternative that I offer in the staff report is to actually rezone to what he the applicant requested the last time he was here, the R 110 zone. And and I'll get to the details of that recommendation in just a moment. Your first, your first alternative, so each of these columns is a different alternative. First alternative is do nothing. And that's always a legitimate alternative when it comes to making these kinds of policy decisions. Is there a reason to make the change? If there's not, it's not a big deal to keep it as is status quo. The property property will still develop. And so I think there may be the last time this property came to the planning commission for review, I think there was the perception from some members of the public that if the rezone gets denied, the open park nature of that the parcel stays intact. And that's that's not an accurate perception to hold. The the rights to develop the land have always been there. It's always been the church's choice whether or not they sell it to someone who might develop it. They did choose to sell it to Mr. Moore, choose to pick it up to develop it. So it's going to happen. It's just a question of how that development is going to occur. Next alternative, you can rezone to the R 112 zone as the applicant has asked and ensure that there is a stub street that goes with it. Something that isn't commonly known. It wasn't known by the applicant. It wasn't known by the others in the community. Is that our code requires a stub street. Planning commissioners, I know you know that because we've dealt with this on a few different developments. If there's a property next door that could be developed in the future, you've got to stub into it. If there is a general plan that suggests a potential alignment of a street, you've got to stub into the adjacent property on that alignment. And so with this alternative here, you just give the applicant what he's asking for, the R 112 zone. And then we just let the current code requirement yield that stuff. But regardless, looking at both of these, you're going to get a stub street out of both of them. Whether you do nothing or you go to the R 112 zone. And you can see findings for for approval here if you would choose to go in this direction. Next one over is you can rezone to the R 112 zone with a cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac may be really enticing to the developer. Maybe enticing to adjacent landowners who might be affected by a connector road going through. If this is the preferred alternative for the planning commission to go, the general plan and the subdivision ordinance both need to be amended to allow for it to happen. And so this is a much bigger task for the applicant to go down. And I'm sure the applicant has not seen all five of these. Just formally put them all together for this presentation today. And so if the applicant sees any of these that he likes or dislikes, I'm I'm sure he'll express his opinion. And the next one maybe is a staff recommendation. And you know what? I've got a typo here. It's not recommended denial. It's recommend approval. But recommend it. So I've got a bigger typo here. I apologize for this. This this whole column is supposed to essentially say rezone to the R 110 zone. Create a development agreement with the applicant who so far is okay with the idea so that he doesn't get any more lots out of it than what he would otherwise get out of the R 112 zone. The R 110 goes into effect. And we would do that instead of R 112 because there are other R 110s in the area. And so when we're putting all the mapping together, just providing some level of consistency in decision making. But also, what we would do in this case is we would look at the street connectivity. And in that development agreement, we would reserve the ability for him or the county to get that stub to be installed at some point in the future as opposed to installing it now. I thought this might be the better alternative for folks who have concerns about a through street being installed as soon as it can be. What this will do is it'll allow him to create a cul-de-sac. He'll reserve by an easement the the rest of the the stub that will go into the property to the east. That'll stay in reserved for whatever period of time that the development agreement is in effect. And if the adjacent landowner to the east decides to develop, that's at that time, we would call on the deferral agreement and require that portion of the street to be installed. So it's no longer cul-de-sac. It will then connect into the adjacent parcel who will then make the the full and complete connection to that other roadway. The the reason why I thought this might be a beneficial compromise is because, to my knowledge, I don't know if the county has ever called on a deferral agreement before. What this does is allows the the applicant wants a a cul-de-sac as well. That's that's the original proposal. So this gives the opportunity for that cul-de-sac to be created, development to be organized around that cul-de-sac, but it doesn't give up the opportunity for the community to have a connection in the future. Chances of that connection happening is probably dependent on what the landlord to the east does with the property in the future. But if it's if it's developed in a manner that doesn't yield a good connection here, then the connection wouldn't ever happen. So in the context of requiring the developer to build a road all the way to the property line versus allowing them to go ahead and build a cul-de-sac, and then maybe there'll be a chance at some point in the future for a connection. I thought would be a better alternative than just build that street and we'll see if anything ever comes of it. And then the 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 final alternative is, you know, it's the big picture approach. It's hey, let's let's push pause on this. Let's talk to the greater public about a larger rezone. And, you know, maybe do some version of what I showed you in the graphics that were there. I think that's my presentation. I should have one more slide that says questions. So yeah, that's that's the end of my presentations. Any questions for me?
Sorry, I had to get unmuted. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Little bit of a concern to start off. So, I mean, I see the point of connectivity and moving all them together, but unless that intersection, I mean, the way that that's proposed right now. If you add all that traffic coming through, I think you would make a nightmare of an intersection.
Which intersection are you talking about?
The one that's proposed right there at 6225 and 2225.
Here?
In the cul-de-sac in our, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I mean, that's the only way that you would make that safe. I mean, to is is there anything in our code? I thought we had something in the code that you had to have an intersection so far away from another intersection.
Um. Yes and no. So our code, our code says that your block widths cannot be less than 500 feet. I don't know. That's that's in the subdivision code, not in the zoning codes. And as we discussed with the consultant from the Wasatch Front Regional Council last fall, that number should probably vary based on how much frontage and width is required per lot. But right now, it's you cannot be less than 500 and you cannot be greater than 1,300 with your block widths. So yeah, you're you're right. If he builds a cul-de-sac, it's not a block width. If he builds a through street, it is. So I mean, that's kind of a double edged sword right there. So if he comes down in here and the road the the road as it exists today, which curves up this way, actually, you know what, let's let's pull up something different here. Apologize. Come on. Oh, now it's gone without me. There we go. Okay, so looking at this here, you're right. So the the road currently curves to the north. This intersection, instead of being or this street, instead of being a through street, came to a 90 degree on that curve or close to a 90 degree. So if he builds a street in here, it's going to come and it's going to have to kind of angle down and then connect right in here somewhere. And yeah, being as far away from the intersection as he can be is going to be important. But if he's way down here in the corner, he's not going to be able to get that lot, you know, except for a really weird, maybe unmarketable lot. If we were to work with the applicant on, so today, that's how the streets exist. And I'm not aware of anything in our code that would suggest that we can require him to reconfigure this intersection. That is one of the benefits, the public benefits of going the route of a development agreement. Giving him a little bit more than he would otherwise get in the RE 15 zone. I can't remember how many lots. I think it's two or three more lots in order to provide for a more beneficial intersection here and then potentially in the future here, if all landowners are okay with that. I think is an important component to consider. The folks who live in the area, they'll be able to tell us better how that curve operates and functions. But a nice crisp 90 degree four way intersection here would definitely be of worth to consider.
Okay, thank you. That's that was my only concern is it just looks like I can't see on this plan in our packet how far that is. You know, on that radius by that detention easement, but I mean, that's not even you know, it doesn't even look like a car's length in in that. So just that seemed awful close to that other intersection to have an intersection, but.
Yeah, and the the applicant has a few other options for how this could be configured, which he'll show in his presentation. But I think you're right. I mean, you get into this here and does get kind of funky as opposed to just being straight. Everyone who would otherwise turn to the left here and go up that that curve would come to a four way stop and then and then turn left at that point.
No, I I see. All right, that was a was all the questions I have. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Charlie? All right, I guess you covered us well, Charlie. No questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if you if you'll allow me, address the the public noticing side of things. We did have some concerns about the postcards that went out. They didn't have a link to this meeting on them. It just informed the public that the meeting would be would be held at a specific time. Going over to the the Zoom standard, I I think has kind of thrown some of this off when I Going over to the Zoom standard, I think has kind of thrown some of us off when it comes to noticing. It is important to note, however, after reviewing all of our noticing for this project with the, with our attorneys. And Mr. Wilson can pipe in if he chooses to do so. We have met the minimum statutory requirements for noticing. And so Commissioner Borkland, the concern about due process while being a valid concern, we always want to make sure that we are doing a correct job on that. Due process obligations have been met. I'm of the peace of mind that, you know, the more people who know and the more people who can participate, the better. And so if the planning commission doesn't feel like that we've reached enough people, I think that that may be even a tabling in this meeting postponing to another meeting would be appropriate if the planning commission feels like.
I would disagree with that.
You're supposed to say, I object.
Because we have met our noticing requirements, if they were to table it based on feeling the notice, then you would be then affecting the applicant's due process rights. And so I would advise the planning commission not to table based on noticing requirements. But Charlie's correct. As we reviewed both state code and our local code, we have met all noticing requirements. The mailer that goes out or the postcard that goes out is a courtesy. It's not required by code as such. We're, you know, just because it left off the place doesn't therefore invalidate other notices which are required and which we did fulfill.
And Mr. Wilson, we have the option as the commission to table it for a week and allow for more public comment.
That's correct. That's correct.
As, as, under the governor's executive order to do these virtual meetings like this, that was one of the things that we selected to do, just so the public is aware, we, the planning commission does have the option to table this meeting. Or excuse me, table this, allow for a public comment to come in over the next seven days. Is that correct? And then we'll have another meeting and make a decision at that point, once we've allowed the public to do that, if the commission so chooses to do that, just, just so the members of the public that are here with us tonight understand that. So.
I think it's also important to note that the mailer did, that went out. It did include contact information for someone to get more information. I did receive one email based on that, asking how to participate. Hopefully that person is able to be in the meeting today. I did not receive any other contacts from the public on wanting to participate. Doesn't mean they don't want to. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. That's what I have for you. I think the applicant would like to address the item and then you can move to open a public hearing.
Thanks, Charlie. Mr. Moore, are you with us?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, good evening. How are you doing? You okay?
Yep, we're good.
All right. Hey, thank you. It's, my name's Randy Moore. I appreciate Charlie's presentation. Covered things extremely thoroughly. I am confused. I had not seen the options that he put out. I have some concern about that, but I'll address that as we get to it. Let's pull up the, I've got a few slides I want to present. If you maybe give us control of it.
Yeah, hang on, I gotta stop sharing here. There we go. Okay, you should be able to do it now, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Are you able to get in?
Working, working.
Okay.
I think we're getting closer.
Ian, do you see the option to share screen? There you go.
Yeah, it's just the wrong window here. Hold on.
There we go. Okay. I want to clear up. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss our application. I believe that throughout this application and with the application we made a number of months ago, there's been a tremendous amount of misinformation as to how our application would actually affect the property. This is the application. This is what we are proposing with the change to the R112 zone.
All I'm seeing is a Zoom photo. Do you have something?
Thank you.
Do that?
Does that show up?
Still zone the Zoom.
It says screen sharing.
We see it moving.
There.
There we go.
There, thank you. You see it? You see the way out there? Thank you very much. Commissioners, good evening. I believe there was a lot of misinformation in the last meeting and there may even be some misinformation as far as what this rezone request that we had made tonight. And I want to try and clear all of that up. There are two issues I believe that need to be decided. One is the rezone and the other is the discussion of a stub street. It was not our decision to sell the property. It was not our decision to change the park. I get that. I understand. It was there for a number of years and we are working to do our best. Someone would develop the property and we hope that we can have a development that the neighborhood and the residents want and are excited about. And we believe that this zone is very conducive with the area and I'll go over that and explain the reasons why. Months ago, when we made the request to the R110 zone, prior to making that request, I went in and did a lot of research. I went and looked at the general plan. The general plan recommended low density residential, three to eight units per acre. I also went back and looked through recent rezone applications, including the one 10 lot subdivision across from UN Elementary. That was rezoned, as the staff said about a year ago, to R110 by you and by the county. And researched the minutes of that rezone. In your planning commission meeting, it was interesting that not one person commented regarding that rezone. And also it was approved unanimously by, by the planning commission. It was also at the county commission meeting. I believe one person came in favor of that application, none against, and it was approved unanimously by the county commission. So we thought that that really was a zone that you desired as a commission and the county commissioners desired. That's why we moved ahead with the R110 zone. That we felt fit very well into the area. So we were nevertheless very surprised when there was a tremendous amount of public comment and people coming to the meeting. The other meetings, there was, there were none. At that time, we were focused on the R110 zone. We didn't really look at the R112. After working through the commission and now looking at the property, we feel that the R112 zone fits in extremely well into the, into the neighborhood. There are 12 lots. This is the plan. There will be 12 lots on, and 12 new custom homes. These are large lots. These are third acre lots. There was a lot of talk and I think a tremendous amount of misunderstanding about the size of the lots and the density. There was talk of high density. There was talk of, even today, I hear rumors of cluster housing, that there's some change that's hidden in here. There are 12 custom homes on 12 third acre lots. That is our application. There's nothing different. There's no way for that to change. These homes would be 12, 12 new homes on homes that we estimate would be in the $550,000 to $700,000 price range. Each vacant parcel, when you look at a parcel of land, you take and, and depending on the size, when we look to develop it, we have to go by the standards of that zone. And for example, in this property, it's fairly wide. So if you take and you run a street through the center of it, then what's on each side is remaining. And then we take the, what the lot sizes and the minimum widths are to essentially determine how those lots will fit into the development. These lots are very deep. When you run that street through the middle, the lots are about 148 to 150 feet. Excuse me, deep. This should place the homes well away from the surrounding subdivisions, from the surrounding homes. Our lots average 0.33 acres. They are truly average third acre lots. And they average 110 feet in width throughout the development. You could change it to the area. That's the plat. Let's just look at that real quick. I don't know if you want to see, I think the staff presented that. This is more of a, of the engineering plat that has the dimensions and everything, but it's essentially, you know, the same as what our other conceptual is. So we looked at this and I'm sure the question is, why are we even changing it? Why, why, why make a change? This R112 zone, we took, and we took this whole area that's shaded in the yellow. Not just adjacent to this, but that entire area and averaged all of those lots, even these large lots that are down in the bottom right corner. If you take all of those lots that are surrounding, they average 0.36 acre. If this, if you were, if you grant the rezoning on this to the R112, our lots average 0.33 acre. That's it. There is a difference of on average. What the existing homes are in the RE15 zone. With the width of what this property is, if it was to remain in the RE15 zone, we would actually, and you know, that's really one of the main reasons that we've been looking to rezone. It's with the width of the property, if it stays in the zone and the dimensions of the property, we end up with lots that are actually even much larger than what the surrounding zones would be. If you grant this R112 rezone in comparison to the recently approved subdivision over across from UN Elementary that was in the R110, our lots on this, what we're proposing are about 20 to 30% larger than what those lots that were in that zone. Well, essentially it's a 12,000 foot minimum lot to what that project had a 10,000 foot minimum. Our request for rezone is strictly based and only to determine what the size of the lots are. And this would be 12 one-third acre lots. You know, it's interesting. We talk about the general plan. Let's maybe go to that, the application. It's interesting. I was looking at the rezone, at the county's rezone application. And what I put in the box there is interesting. This is a nine-page application. The very first paragraph states Weaver County general plan sets the direction for land use in unincorporated Weaver County. This is done through the adoption of goals and policies. State law requires that a variety of county actions be consistent with the general plan. The general plan is implemented by various means, including zoning and subdivision ordinances. The general plan recommends low density residential, which we fully agree with. It also states that that is defined as three to eight units per acre. Our application, if granted to the R112, would be 2.6 units per acre. We are below even the range of what the general plan not only recommends, but essentially states is necessary to stay with it. I mean, you could make a case that the density through the general plan, as the staff somewhat discussed, could and maybe even should to meet the general plan, could be almost double the number of units of what we are requesting or more. So we feel that it's well within the, it's below what the general plan is. It's 12 units. Since we closed on the property a number of months ago, we've had a number of potential buyers contact us with interest in the property, which we're very excited about. We want to move ahead. We want to develop the property. We want to bring new neighbors into the neighborhood. We want to build high quality, nice, custom homes. But we have a potential list, waiting list of about eight or 10 potential buyers. And we've talked to those and we've asked them as they've called and contacted us, even, even without signs on the property. You know, what type of lot are you looking for? What size of lot are you looking for? And honestly, the majority have, have wanted to be even in the lower range of what those lot sizes are. Most, many are empty nesters or older that don't want larger yards. They want to put, possibly put the money in the home. But I still don't want to put the impression this is a low, or high density project. They are third acre large lots. So as I said, the question is, you know, why even change the zone? We believe that this zone will fit almost identically to the lot sizes that are adjoining it into the entire area. There is a difference of three hundredths of an acre in lot size. You need to find the right balance in zoning property. The right balance between lot sizes not always equate to a larger or more expensive home. You've got to find the right balance between that. And in many cases, if the lots were to be larger, the price may be higher. And essentially buyers may have to make a determination between the size of the home or amenities in the home. But we still believe our lots range from as small as 12,000 feet square feet to 16,000 square feet in the cul-de-sac to a largest lot that's almost a half an acre, 19,000 feet. We believe that that gives us a very good mix and fits in virtually identically to the adjoining homes. This should not in any way stick out as anything different than any of the existing homes that are there. The lot sizes are three hundredths of an acre difference. They're virtually the same. So we would ask that you rezone to the R112. We believe that it will not make, it'll fit in very well to the neighborhood. Now, let's talk about the stub road. The staff talked about that. Let's bring up the area. We just, we do not see We just, we do not see the need for the connection of the road. There are already, if you want to, if you, if somebody wants to come from, say, the front of our property at that intersection to the west to the other side, there are already two, possibly three connections to get from one to the other. Uh, stub roads are needed either for access or public access or to get to a public space. The school is up in the top part of, of the uh picture here. If there was a school on the other end of our property, well, maybe there would be, need a connection and the traffic is driving around to the other side. If there was a large parcel of land that did not currently have a stub, then there may be a requirement or a need for that. If, uh, but we don't see that in either of these cases. Now, it's interesting in looking at the staff. Uh, I hadn't seen that before and I apologize, Charlie, because I haven't seen those recommendations as he stated. But in each of those, it said stub required by code. Stub required by code. Let's pull the code up on the stub row. I'll show it here. I strongly disagree with that statement. Uh, let's see if we can shrink it. There we go. So let's look at this. This was what I found as, uh, what your current code is. The arrangement of streets in new subdivisions shall make provision for the continuation of existing streets to adjoining area or their proper protection where adjoining land is not subdivided. Insofar as such may be deemed necessary by the plant, planning commission for public requirements. The street arrangement must be such as to cause no unnecessary hardship to owners of adjoining property when they plant their own land and seek to provide for convenient access. Uh, making this connection, let's go back to the overall. I, I've talked to to the adjoining landowner and you can see from this aerial here. And it's a little hard to see, but this, there's a street stubbed in currently from the north on the top into his property. He owns all of these parcels down here. But there is a, right where the tree line ends, there is a very steep drop-off in grade at that edge. Uh, he also has an existing home, as you can see in the aerial, and another structure down at the bottom. He does not want the connection in any way. He sees it as a hardship. I, I know he has written a letter. I hope that the, as commissioners, you look at that letter. Uh, it would be a hardship on him. He would essentially, uh, he has a little bit of, of land that's usable on the top there next to that home. The rest of it slopes off. Uh, it would be, uh, I mean, it would run right through the middle of his property and he would probably be in a situation of, of possibly tearing down structures or homes to make that connection. Over on our side, uh, it is, would be very difficult for us to stub that road. I know it, he said, well, just stub the road, but we can't stub the road. Uh, we have to have a cul-de-sac. We can't, we can't run a street down. Stop it, uh, to be a turnaround. So we would have to have a cul-de-sac of some kind and be able to make that connection. And this overall drawing, it's interesting because if that connection was to go through over our property and through the neighbors, it really doesn't get anybody any faster than the existing roads that are there. We kind of did a measurement here. And if you were to come from the front, front of our property, come through and up, you could go on either of these other two. Length is almost identical, so it doesn't, just doesn't serve a public good. There's, there's, there's access that is currently there, that is currently available and uh, very little traffic on these roads. The other issue, let's go back just to the overall uh, concept. Yes. So there was some discussion about this road coming in. Uh, if, if this road was connected, someone would have to come down, turn into this 22, 25 East, back into our road, back through, and then through, make two turns into the neighbor's property. The, the staff made a drawing of this and sort of straightened it all out and through the neighbors curved that road, but it, it wouldn't ever go that way because it'd go right through the existing very nice home that he has there. So nobody would, nobody would make this connection. Very few, I shouldn't say, very few would make this connection. Uh, you would have to make so many turns through there. Uh, it, it just would be difficult. Now, there was some talk about, with the staff about bringing this road straight or how this would intersect. Uh, I sent this plan some time ago, a month or two ago. I can't remember, can't remember the gentleman's name, but I spoke with the Weber County Traffic Engineer about this and about this intersection. I sent him the plans to get his feedback. Uh, he expressed to me that he was comfortable with the distancing. Uh, he stated that as long as there was, I can't remember his recommendation, but I think he was saying two cars of staging because of this road. Uh, the 22, 25 East is essentially a cul-de-sac. So I sent this plan to him and he uh, was comfortable with the way that this, our proposed road would come in and intersect. To bring it straight in, I mean, I, we even looked at that originally because I thought, you know, it's always better and easier to develop if the road is straight. But to bring that and to make a whole intersection there would be, it would just be, at intersection, be a mess. I, it would, it wouldn't align, it would come in, in, from different directions. So I have talked with the county traffic about this and uh, he seemed comfortable with our proposal, at least at that point. Um, let's go to that easement. Uh, the staff talked about possibly doing an easement over the lots so that there's a future that maybe at some point if it was ever there that, you know. Yeah, I thought so. Let me give us just a minute. I'll keep talking and we'll pull this other up if we can. We had our engineer take, uh, the staff talked about, well, maybe we could, uh, uh, there it is. Take the lots in the back of the cul-de-sac. Maybe you can zoom in a little bit on that. There we go. And put an easement over them that uh, would be there and if there was a possibility, you know, or need in the future that, 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 that would be there. But that would render those lots very difficult to build. Uh, the lot seven, as we proposed there, there's an existing storm drain pipe that comes down there uh, on the north side of lot seven. As you can see, it's, it's sketched there. So we'll have an easement for that pipe that'll come down into the new road and out. And if we put an easement on the other side, uh, it takes the buildable area of those lots down to, you know, a lot seven particularly to virtually uh, nothing. Uh, the other issue you can see there is the adjoining landowner has a, has a home or a structure there that if that road continues, it's not going to have adequate setback and that that home's going to have to be torn down. Uh, so you know what? We've developed in many municipalities along the Wasatch Front. And it's interesting as, as you do that to see the concerns and the issues that different municipalities have. Uh, in many municipalities that I've worked in, they've requested us to put more cul-de-sacs in. We had a development, uh, a year or so ago. They asked us to, to take a road and redesign it so that there were more cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs are very desirable to the residents. In many cases, uh, they want to slow traffic down uh, and, and uh, help to aid larger lots. Uh, so we just don't see the need for the connection. Uh, you know, I, I, the, the adjoining landowner, he's contacted me twice and has been adamantly against it and feels that it would be a hardship for him to have it. And it's interesting because when you look at the code, it doesn't require it. It asks the planning commission to look and determine it. But it also states that if it is a hardship, uh, that essentially, uh, you would have to reject it if the adjoining landowner had the belief or the, uh, you know, specified that it was a hardship on his part according to the way the code is written, then you would, uh, not require it. So, uh, as far as the other question you brought up about public comment, uh, we would hope that it's not continued, but, uh, you know, if necessary, but also, you know, this item would go to the county commission and there would be option for county or for public comment certainly at the county commission. So that's, that's it. I hate to take so much time, but I honestly, I just want to clear up any misunderstandings. Uh, I think there's, they've been great over time. This is 12 lots, 12 custom homes, 12 one-third acre lots. We would ask that you approve the R112 zone. We believe that it fits in virtually identical to the lot size of the neighbors. And we would also ask that you not require a road stub. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Chair, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, could you show the location of that waterline easement? Is that going to stay where it's at and you're just going to build the roads around it? It looks like it's, it's kind of between two lots in one area, but I can't see where it is.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Uh huh.
Me here? Thank you. Yeah, so if you look at the, uh, oh, there we go. Oh my. So currently on the property, there is a storm drain pipe that comes in here. Currently comes right down here. It's about right where that's the back of the softball diamond. And then it, it, there's a pipe that comes out into a, uh, catch basin here. So essentially what we're going to do is take that pipe and, and pick it up right here in the street and then we're going to run it down the street out. And all of this easement and pipe will be vacated and eliminated. So, so that, yes, this easement, uh, needs to stay there. We've tried to align our lot lines as best we can so that they, this will line up with that. And then we'll have an easement on both sides of these lots. But to run, that's where I say this easement will be here, but to run another easement out through here is going to be virtually, uh, very little of that lot left to build. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, hearing none. Um, we will move on down to the public hearing portion of this. So, um, I just want to go through and Mr. Wilson, if you would just help me with this, uh, for the members.
Excuse me, before we have a public comment, can we have a little bit of discussion?
You may.
I guess my, my comment is about the, not just the age of the general plan, but, but that it was based on, it was adopted in 1970, but it was based on the 1960 census. And at that time, there was a whole different, uh, expectation for growth than there, than what actually happened. Um, the development pattern that was expected to happen didn't happen. And so to me, the, and then that general plan, um, included not just, um, but you in a Highlands area, it's everything south of 36th Street in Ogden down to Washington Boulevard in South Ogden. It included the whole area. It wasn't just UNS, um, development plan. And it hasn't been followed by any of the communities. It was like it's put on a shelf for 40 years and not important. Now all of a sudden it's important. So that's just my comment.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other comments or, or deliberation before we go into public comments? Open up the public hearing. Hey, all right, uh, just kind of go over the, with the public wishing to speak on this matter before we open the public hearing on how this is going to work tonight. Um, Mr. Wilson, will you just kind of help me if I mess this up? But, uh, what we're going to have you do is down at the bottom of your screen in the participants part, um, you can, if you open that up, there's a spot there where you can click raise hand. Um, if you'll just click on that and, and raise your hand and then we'll go through and, uh, and call on you as, as we get through with the comment and move on down to the next. Um, staff will unmute you and, and let you, uh, have your three minutes to speak. And then, uh, they'll, they'll all, we'll try and keep some notes here of, of what you bring up. And then either staff or the applicant will address those uh, after we close the public hearing portion of this. Is that correct?
It is, Chair Edwards. And I would just add that if someone has submitted public comment via email and they want to speak, they don't get both. It's one or the other. And so if they don't want their email read into the record, um, they can choose to speak. But if we are reading their emails into the record, then they don't get to speak on that as well.
Okay, with that being said, Mr. Wilson, do you want to hold off and read those at the end? Just to give the people the option of that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, if, if that's how you'd like to proceed, that's up to you is, uh, the planning commission.
It may be better to read them at the beginning. That way they know that they've been represented and not missed.
I'll defer to you planning commissioners, however you want to proceed on that.
Commissioners, uh, any thoughts on that? Um, on how you'd like to, to go through that?
Maybe we should ask the people who send emails if they would prefer to have the, that as, as a record or if they'd like to speak. Maybe that would be the better way. I don't know.
That's why I figured if we did it at the end, it would, if they didn't step up and speak, at least we could address their comments through the, via the email they sent in. But if they spoke, then we won't read their, their comments, um, that was emailed in.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention, I, I received a message from, um, his name is Colton McSwain. He, he does have to leave soon, so he's, I'm just like, you know, he's requested to speak first.
Okay, we can, we can accommodate that once we open this portion up. So, um, with that, uh, commissioners, any, any other recommendations on, on how we proceed with the comments? Direction?
Let's just proceed.
Okay. Um, yeah, we'll just, Commissioner Borkman, if you're good with that, just because I don't have a list of everyone to ask if they want to speak or not. Let's, let's just read the emails at the end and, and if they're, they're, you went off and if they voiced their, uh, public comment, then we won't read the ones that would submit it. Does that work? Okay, all right. Um, we're now going to open the public hearing for, um, Okay, all right. We're now going to open the public hearing for this item. Like I'd mentioned, push the raise hand button. We'll call on you. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you would, state your name and address for the record. Why don't you start just for the purpose of minutes? And we'll go ahead and start with Colton McSwain on our first comment, or excuse me, our first speaker here. So, the floor is yours. You've got three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'd just like to thank everyone. I did send an email, and I understand that I will be replacing that with some of these comments. But I just wanted to reiterate what Randy Moore had said about the stub street first, and that is that it, I read the code the same as him, it's unnecessary hardship. And he stated some of these terms. Yeah, I have a custom home that I built up for family right there that would go right through my driveway. I have steel fencing, finished landscaping, steel buildings, and it chews up the most usable part of my land. So, any value of my property that I have, this road would completely destroy the value of my land. The last meeting that I went to is all about property rights and property ownership, and I appreciate the county and their stance there. This would totally destroy it. And anyone that's been in that area knows that you would never develop land right there where I am with a road right there. I would have never built that home that way. It changes the whole situation of everything. You would face them a whole different way, and that road would do literally nothing. It connects to nowhere, to anything quicker, and it devalues Mr. Moore's property along those two lots as well. I just think that there's a lot of consideration that needs to go into there. And I'm also protecting a handful of my neighbors on 2375 that I hope are in this meeting, but they do not want that to go through there because they don't like the connectivity of that. They do not want it. They want an end of the road. They want me to keep them safe from that because I have open land that I'm keeping open, and I understand that code. But it is, there's multiple unnecessary hardships there that are just ridiculous, and it singles me out particularly and kills my property value. So, I just, it's just not there. On the other note, a cul-de-sac is so desirable, I can't even imagine why we'd ever want to leave that. And the thing that Mr. Moore has presented with custom homes in that price range is only going to beautify our area and our neighborhood. I know that my email won't be part of the meeting minutes, but I'd be happy to have any conversations with people to explain why it's a hardship on mine. And Charlie, I want to thank you. I got your email, and I will respond to you. I've been out with my family, but here's just another unnecessary hardship. I have been on the phone or talking to people every night for this entire week about how it's either going to go forward or it's not, and I'm going to have a road there, and they don't want it. That's every night I'm away from my family, and this is just kind of becoming ridiculous that we would require something that makes zero sense and takes property value away from a landowner that is only trying to beautify and make a wonderful area for the neighbors there and protect them from a road that makes zero sense. And honestly, causes so much hardship that that alone voids the code according to what has been read. So, that's my opinion. That's where I stand. I love the idea of a cul-de-sac behind me. I think that it would be nice if it was sizable lots with nice homes that would bring the value of all of us property owners around us up and with like material or better. And from what I've understood, that's the case, and I strongly oppose a stubbed road, and I wouldn't ever allow that through mine because of some of the hardships that I've stated, which I'd be happy to state further in other conversations. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Oh, and I'm sorry, my address is 6198 South 2375 East and 6197 South 2375 East. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. So, the next one I see on my screen, it looks like it just is an ST and then an H. Are you with us?
Yeah. Hi, this is Stephen Handley. I'm S-T-H. I also sent some emails, so you can go ahead and just disregard those. Thanks, everybody, for your time. I'm standing here with, you know, four or five of my neighbors, and so a few things. The notice for this meeting was really, really terrible. You did send a postcard with an email for questions. That email that I sent went unresponded to. So, whatever email is on that postcard, whoever that person is, they did not respond. It wasn't until today that I learned about the Zoom call. I personally ran around to let as many of my neighbors as possible know about this call. So, and when I did finally receive a copy of the meeting details, the Zoom meeting number was wrong. The link was correct if you had to type it, if you typed the URL in, but the meeting number was wrong. So, I know your lawyers have looked at that, but were they aware that you sent the wrong Zoom meeting number? So, moving along, we are also opposed to the stub road. The cul-de-sac is a great idea. And I think if the developer or the city were to propose some public green space where the property kind of bends and sticks out to the three-way right on 2225, if you could have 11 lots instead of 12, designate some public green space along the road, then I think you'd have a lot more buy-in from the neighbors on, you know, on what you want to do. So, to summarize, we're opposed to a through street. We think that would be detrimental to our neighborhood. Cul-de-sac positive and some green space, and that would get you a long way with the neighbors. And I'm at 6199 South 2225 East, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Stephen, for those comments. Next one I got here is going to be Sarah. I'm sorry, I don't want to slaughter the last name. Are you with us, Sarah? Witcher?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you. Just state your name and address, and you got your three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Wickern. That's how you pronounce it. And I am at 6261 South 2383 East. I really appreciated the comments by the planner, Charlie Ewert. And I think if we had that kind of involvement while this area was being developed, we would have a much better road system through the community. And I think it would, if we'd have green space like was planned. I guess what is frustrating to a lot of people in the community after hearing what was intended for the area. For one, I have been frustrated with the streets. Now, I don't think a through street in this situation is going to improve the area. I think the cul-de-sac is definitely the way to go. But there are several other areas where we needed through streets, and we need better connectivity. And if we were to increase the density in this area, we would need that connectivity to support the density. And the other thing that was planned in the area was more green space to support the higher density of the area. Now, I think the development at the R12 looks nice. My other concern, so I'm a civil engineer, I do worry about the entrance to that community. I think it's squirrely and could be dangerous. I would love to see that be somehow made into a T, you know, or I guess it would go through, but somehow make a four-way intersection there with stop signs. I think that would be beneficial. As far as changing the zoning, I just wonder who this benefits. I know now the landowner is the developer who bought the land, but the people in the area, you have to go pretty far away from this development to get to a different zoning. And that R10, nobody raised their hand, nobody came to the meeting because the people selling the land owned most of the land around it. There just wasn't a lot of notification. I think there would have been more public concern had we, had that been, had people been notified. So, I don't know. He's done a great, a great job with the R12. Is it possible? Yes. Maybe, I think as a consolation, maybe allow the R12, but like they said, add a little bit of green space to the community. Anyway, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for those comments. Next one, it looks like it's going to be Angela. You with us, Angela?
Yes. Yeah, mine are more questions. If you could write them down, make sure they get answered if that's appropriate. My first question would be to the commission. I'm just curious, what changed since a unanimous vote six months ago? I mean, that's a big change from that to tonight even recommending R10. I mean, we're lucky that Mr. Moore isn't jumping on that and still staying with the requested R12, but that's a big jump from a unanimous no to keeping RE15 six months ago. And then my second question would be to Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, we appreciate you and your commitment to keep these custom homes, you understanding that the area is unique. We don't want it to look like cookie cutter homes or suburbia. That's what makes it special. But also, just, I had a question, and you're not really obligated to tell us, but I mean, what is your plan to stay with that? I'm the daughter of a custom home builder. Do you have the capacity to build 12 custom homes? And there's nothing kind of keeping you bound to that. So, just curious if you would share with us, what's your plan to keep with that? Thank you.
One more. Angela, if you just wouldn't mind stating us your address for the record, please.
Yes, 2220 Jared Way.
Thank you. All right. Next one looks like would be just a, just a name, Bruce, would be the next one.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. If you'd just state your name and address for the record.
Name is Bruce Nelson, 6172 South 2175 East. Thank you. I appreciate all the presentations this evening. It's been really, really very good. This does come back to the issue where this subdivision is totally surrounded with hundreds and hundreds of lots that are all R115. I'm having a hard time still understanding, like we did last time, why the county would even be interested in dealing with anything less than an R15. This is what I would call a true infill piece, and what I found in other areas, the infill pieces many times or historically are zoned the same as the zoning all the way around it. And I think that's the, that's the important part of what needs to take place here. I don't know if there's such a thing as spot zoning. In a sense, I would look at it and say it feels like it's spot zoning. One of my real concerns here is what Charlie has talked about, about the poor road system that's taking place here. And as you're aware, the existing cul-de-sac that this is on is, it houses 15 homes. And by putting on another cul-de-sac in this cul-de-sac, it's a very unusual plan. It is what it is, and so it's like we can really modify the world here. But, so probably the overriding concern is that the more houses that we put on that lot or on that, in that subdivision, then the more, excuse me, the more difficulty we have in traffic. And you can see by the plats that Mr. Moore showed, you pull out of the subdivision road and you turn right to get on, I think it's 2225, and you may have two car lengths before you get that, which is highly unusual. So, I'm just concerned that overall, that that agitates, causes more trouble for snow plowing, for fire departments, for the garbage people. The plat that I had showed that the road is 50 feet wide, and I don't know if that's the easement or if that's the road. If that's, maybe someone can answer that. If that's a 50-foot easement, that's a very narrow road, and again, causes more consternation with the ability to come and go. I was going to mention the other two developments that were pointed out by, excuse me, by Charlie. The other R110 ones are different in many ways in that they're, the cul-de-sac that they're on is very narrow. It comes out, both of them come out to a very busy road, where this one comes out to a non-busy road, another cul-de-sac, and is really, has totally different circumstances behind it. One of my concerns too, that as I've seen Mr. Moore, as he's shown the plat, he's not, one of the plats shows this major easement through lots one through four. And I don't know if that's something that he's planning on moving or not. But if he doesn't move that, then Lot 1 becomes almost unbuildable. Lot 2 is so-so, Lot 3 is buildable, Lot 4 is, comes back to be so-so unbuildable. And so I'm hoping that if that is, if that easement is not going to be moved, then I would hope that the county would look at that and say, why would we approve a lot or two lots that are truly not buildable? You could build a single wide mobile home there type thing, that type of a style of home, but that's not a $550 to $700,000 house. So, maybe the plans are to get rid of that because there's other plans that he showed that we were not, that we're not part of the package. We're not, we're not, didn't show that. The thing I like about R15 is it gives more frontage. It gives more buildable space. There's less impact. If we were back to nine or 10 lots instead of the 12 lots, there are just less impact to that cul-de-sac, that double cul-de-sac, which is again, a very, very highly, a real big high concern, I think, for all of the neighbors as well. So, I guess one of my questions is, where does the county win by asking the planning commission to approve this R112? Where does the county win by having more lots on a cul-de-sac that will cause more grief and more travel issues? All the rest that I've discussed, I'm not sure that that's the case. I think that's it. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak.
Thank you for that, Bruce. Next one is going to be, I believe it's Micah.
Yes, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep, just, if you'd just state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
You bet. My name is Micah Cronmiller. The address is 6277 South 2225 East. We are across the street from the proposed entrance to this new development and down to the south, three houses. I have two concerns. My first concern is with the intersection that this new development will create, you know, where it's currently planned or where the, you know, where the plans are demonstrating that that intersection would be. We would have an intersection that would come out into 2225, and then we would have another intersection, you know, essentially 30 feet beyond at the intersection, you know, where 6225 and 2225 kind of merge on that corner. And my concern is that about half of the homes that exist on this cul-de-sac back here already, half of these 15 homes have elementary-age school children that use that route to walk to the elementary school every day. And so, not only do I think it would be an issue with fluidity in terms of having people pull out onto a street, make a right turn, and then have to stop immediately again, and then, you know, make a right or left turn at that point. The fluidity, you know, getting in and out of the neighborhood, I think, would be affected greatly by having a road that stuck out, you know, where this one is shown to be planned. But also with these kids walking to school, I think that creates, you know, even more of a hazard. Right now, it's already a little bit tricky because that corner, you'll see that curve that comes around where 2225 turns in to 6225. That corner is already somewhat of a dangerous corner. Cars come around there at a pretty quick clip frequently, and, you know, and there's not a lot of visualization. There's a home right on the very corner there. People coming around that corner can't see far ahead of them. So, already for our kids that are traveling and traversing that street to get to the elementary school, that's already a bit of a danger. It concerns me that putting another intersection in right there would create an even greater risk for the kids moving in and out of the neighborhood every day, traveling to and from school. As well, I'd like to comment that the lot sizes, I know Mr. Moore has presented a great plan. It looks very nice. The cul-de-sac looks very nice. But in the end, ultimately, I think that there, you know, is a high degree of motivation for keeping these lot sizes the same with what we have already. And one of the main motivations is that value, you know, home value in the end, when I go to sell my home in, you know, a number of years, whenever that will be, my home value is increased by having homes around it that are on lots that are similar or bigger, and that homes that are bigger, you know, similar or bigger than my home. And ultimately, for me as a homeowner, letting lots be smaller, even if they're just almost inconsequentially smaller, does in fact decrease the value, you know, of those homes. The lots just aren't as big. And, you know, and so whatever that decrease in value is, is a comparable decrease, you know, for the value of my home. So, I, you know, my preference would be to continue with the R15 and to keep everything as it is. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments, sir. So, the next one doesn't have a name with it. It just says iPhone. So the next one doesn't have a name with it, it just says iPhone. With their hand raised, are you with us?
Hello, is it, can you hear me?
Yep, now we got you.
Okay, okay, I'll be quick. This is Liz Call, 2285 East, 6175 South. I just I did send an email, so you don't have to read that. Just regarding the postcards, I, yeah, there wasn't where the meeting was located. However, I did send the email and I did get a response and they sent me the Zoom link. And so I am on here, so that worked, but it was kind of confusing. I would just also like to recommend that I would like the zoning to remain the same, just to have a consistent lot size around. We did quick numbers last night and the the lot size of the of the proposed of the development, they are, he says they're a third of an acre, only four of them are above a third of an acre. They average out to be .326. So eight out of the 12 are less than a third of an acre, with the the smallest one being And just the lot, I didn't do as as large of an area as he did, but the lots just touching the property and just across the street, average out to be .434 of an acre. And that's not including the property east of Colton McSwain's, which he has eight acres. I thought that would skew it. So that is a little bit different size. And so I just agree with the how the you guys all unanimously denied the rezoning last time. And I thought that just because consistency in the area, I agree with that, even though his proposed of a cul-de-sac, and it does look nice, but I do like the bigger lot size. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Next one is going to be Paul, are you with us?
Yes, yeah, Paul Freecard. My address is 2249 East, 6275 South. And I hope that you keep the zoning as RE15. I can't believe we're looking at it, the 1970 plan, it said up to eight dwellings per acre. There's nothing like that anywhere around here. If you rezone, this will be an island with RE15s all the way around. And another issue is that people in those new in this new area would not be able to have animals, farm animals. And whereas on the east side, Mr. McSwain's property, and also on the north side, people have raised chickens, turkeys, pigs, cattle. So these new lots would have would not be harmonious with that with that type of condition. And that's all I have.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? We missed anybody? I'm not seeing any more hands raised on my screen. All right. If there's no one else that's wanting to wishes to speak on this matter, then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Looks like I made some notes here on this, Charlie. Did you do you want to go through and address these? How do you want to go through and address some of these comments? Questions?
I've got some notes here as well. If I didn't catch everything that you caught, Mr. Chairman, feel free to call that out.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Start going through.
Go ahead.
Um, if there is an option that we might table it, we might not want to close the public hearing because it would have to be again, re-noticed in the newspaper again. So if we're thinking we may want to table it and look at it again in a week or whenever because of noticing, just because of that option, I'm just wondering if we should not close the public hearing.
Well, it wouldn't be because of noticing, the noticing met the requirements for that. The only reason why we would do that is just because we now have that option if we feel that we want to reach the public. But Mr. Wilson, how how does that work about closing the public hearing?
My understanding is you can close the public hearing, but you can still receive those comments and then they'll be part of the record. So it's, I guess, kind of, tho- those new comments are retroactive into the current public hearings.
Were all the emails that were received, either somebody addressed them or do they need to be written read into the record? Thank you, Commissioner Park. I forgot those. Does staff have those right readily available? I'm trying to navigate two screens here.
I've got a few of them. Matt, did you mention that you have all of them and you were going to read them into the record?
Sure.
Well, if you have them, if not, I can go through my emails and pull them up.
I don't, I didn't compile them, but let me just, I can go back and see what I've got from Marta.
I I think I've got them here. So it looks like Mr. McSwain's, we won't read in. The next one would be from, would you, do you want me to go ahead and read these then?
Yeah, sure, if you want to, whatever ones we were that are not, they didn't have the opportunity. It looks like there are some on Mr. McSwain's that were from some other people.
And Mr. Chairman, do you have the most recent comment that was sent at 4:39 PM?
Yep.
Okay.
So that was all, yeah, so that was from Mr. McSwain, but there's other people that have put their names on there.
I think Marta compiled them all together.
Oh, is that what it was?
I, okay, but I think that they've just been added all to the same email, I believe. So.
Oh, I see, yep, I see.
So it looks like there's a comment from Kathy Pharaoh, lives at 6245 South, 2225 East. Just states, I believe the current zoning should be left as RE15. Please maintain the integrity of my well-established neighborhood. The rezone would not fit into the area harmoniously. Thank you. Let's see. Trying to make sure we're not doubling any of these. So the next one, it looks like from Miss Devon Lafferty. I'm sorry, apologize if I slaughter these names if you're on here. To whom it may concern, we are writing you in regards to the developing property at 6224 South, 2225 East. We are currently on the waiting list to purchase a lot in this area and are in full support of the R112 zone that's being requested. As someone who is, who will hopefully be residing in this area in the near future, we would definitely prefer the street to be developed as a cul-de-sac. Thank you for your time and consideration. Looks like that next one. Looks like next one is Larry Mattson.
The one for from Merle Lindley?
I meant, did I scroll past one?
Hang on. Yeah, yeah, it's the it's a little bit longer just above it. It's a couple pages.
Oh, there, I apologize, I missed that one. Merle Lindley reside at 6224 South, 2225 East. The approximate location listed on, oh, the properties adjusted, all right. I was going to say, isn't that the address of our deal? It confused me for a sec. All right, the approximate location listed on my notice, my property is located adjacent to the subject property to the southwest. If the rezoning is approved, it will involve my entire north property line. So first item, when the price was negotiated for this property to construct seable homes, the purchasers were aware at the time of the zoning code and nothing has changed since. Evidently, they have concluded that by changing the zoning code, they could construct more homes at a greater monetary value. This would affect surrounding homes at a much greater negative value. We, the surrounding homeowners, opposed to the rezone for some or all of the following reasons. Traffic congestion, this area already has traffic congestion problems, doubling the number of homes in this area significantly adds to the problem. B would be secondary water. Presently in the spring, when the reservoirs are at their peak, outwater pressure is at 20 PSI.
I think that's supposed to be hour water pressure.
That would make more sense. We are required to add a pump to our system to bring the water pressure up to accommodate watering our lawns. Culinary water, we have experienced rate increases and water restrictions in the last couple of years due to reduced water usage. With the added usage of many new homes, we are more likely to see added rates and restrictions. Any new construction costs required to satisfy the added requirements will be assessed to the existing homes as well as the new homes. Item D is sewer, as the water rates increase, the sewer will follow. Item E, fire danger, with homes more closely located, the fire danger becomes more prevalent. Item F, noise level, added homes more closely located will increase noise. Item G, schools, added population will increase our school attendance, creating additional schooling requirements. Item H, pets, dogs and cats, et cetera, will be notable increase, a notable increase, particularly cats, which are not controlled. The number of cats per household are not limited, may roam uncontrolled. Item I, snow removal would be much a much greater problem, snow placement would be a problem. This would involve the county for snow removal. So number two, we realize that to maintain the present zoning does not eliminate these concerns, but it would greatly diminish the results. Item number three, we are powerless to see any reason that the rezone of this property from RE15 to R112 would complement or enhance our community or that it would restrict a buyer's objective to construct the homes. Item number four, we that word's bigger than I can pronounce, Charlie.
Sorry, enormously.
Enormously object to the rezone. Thank you. All right, where was we now on the next? All right. We just got the Mattson one left, I believe. Okay, my name is Larry Mattson. My wife, Jan, and I have lived in the area since 1977. 13 years ago, we moved to 2235 East, 6275 South, which is the same neighborhood as the subject property. We understand that Mr. Moore is the new owner of said property and is requesting to change the current zoning from R15 to R111. This area is an established residential area with homes ranging from 400 to $700,000, not a starter home area. Our hope is that Mr. Moore would respect our area building quality, custom homes that would complement, maintain the design integrity of our community and area. Thank you. All right, I believe that is all of them, or did I miss them?
There is one, Steve Hadley, after that one.
He, he mentioned, oh, he was our second person to speak.
Okay, all right.
All right. Now, thanks for catching that, Commissioner Park, Commissioner Borkland, so that we got all those comments into the record. Charlie, you're up again.
Hey, thank you. Actually, I wanted to address Stephen Hadley's concern. And Mr. Chairman, I apologize if I out of decorum in doing so, but directly to Mr. Hadley, I apologize, I did not see the email. And when you said that you sent one and it went unresponded, I went back through my emails and sure enough, it was there. So I did miss that email and I apologize for doing so. That was completely my fault. The the noticing postcards were intended for a certain effect, but without the link on it certainly did cause some confusion. This whole COVID thing and going to virtual meetings is has been challenging on all of us in the office for these noticing requirements because it's just, it's a big change in what we're, our routine is. So again, apologies for for that side of things. And I can certainly give you a call, Mr. Hadley, if if you'd like me to. Okay, so first comment before the public hearing was from Commissioner Borkland regarding the the plan being basically irrelevant because it's old. I can disagree. It is a little embarrassing from a planning perspective to have to go to a 50-year-old plan to try and provide quality recommendations for the future. As I mentioned in the presentation, however, there are elements of that plan that I still think are applicable to the area. Just as as a planner myself, being professionally trained in this field, I'm not comfortable throwing the bath water out just in case there is a baby in there. And and I certainly can't utilaterally make decisions for the entire community. So it'd be nice to have something that's a little bit, well, a lot more more current. When we make recommendations, I mean, our recommendations, we're trained to make them based on community objectives. When we make decisions on individualized items like this one parcel rezone or a subdivision or so forth, we get pretty isolated not thinking about that one property or that one cul-de-sac or that that one, whatever it may be, to the point that we can occasionally forget to look at the bigger picture. And not just the bigger picture as the facts stand, but the bigger picture as the greater community desires it. So in the absence of something better, I did stick with the the general plan, but knowing full well that it may not be applicable. So that's something else that I pointed out in the staff report and also offered as one of the alternatives is if it's not the right time or right place, then deny the rezone or offer recommendation for denial. Mr. McSwain, he and I, or I exchanged an email with him and he mentioned he'd be getting back to me. I don't know that, I don't know that I read the ordinance as Mr. McSwain or as Mr. Moore has been is reading it, but I could certainly see how they've interpreted it. The ordinance is intended to say that if a developer that comes first causes a problem for another development developer to get access to the road system or develop because of the first developer's issue or or problem that he's created, then those kinds of things shouldn't be allowed. Where a through street or at least a stub street would provide, would enhance the connectivity in the area, including the connectivity on Mr. McSwain's property. I think the ordinance was intended to require the planning commission to look for opportunities for that to occur. However, it is correct, I guess I cited a few different times that a stub street is required, that that ordinance does leave subjectivity for that to the planning commission. So you guys can can make a determination on that yourselves here. I do sympathize very much so with Mr. McSwain's concerns, however, because he was essentially involuntarily dragged into the conversation. He has spent a lot of time and I think that his property is probably most effective. He has spent a lot of time and I think that his property is probably most affected by the outcome of this subdivision. And that's just my opinion. I know other property owners nearby may have a different opinion there. Miss, I think it was Wickren, Sarah, she mentions that there, there needs to be a better consideration for traffic infrastructure in the area. It sounds like she understands that trying to get better consideration for a community that's pretty, pretty well built out is going to be challenging. So finding those individual opportunities, I think is going to be important. She mentioned the four way intersection right outside the subject property on 6225 and 2225, so 6225 South and 2225 East. I don't know that we have an ordinance right now that would compel Mr. Moore to create a four way intersection right there. If we worked with Mr. Moore through the potential of a rezone, essentially conditioning rezoning on a four way intersection there, I think it's much more likely for that to occur, especially if our engineering division is comfortable with the configuration of what has been proposed by Mr. Moore. And so when it comes to negotiation for improvements to the community, I think we stand in a much better spot to negotiate with Mr. Moore through rezone rather than trying to require it through the subdivision process. And Ms. Wickren also mentioned that more green space needs to be planned and I 100% agree. Right now, the county doesn't have parks department that functions with small parks. We've got Parks and Rec that has large regional parks. Communities like Western Weaver and Augen Valley have organized and created a special parks district. And through that, they've been able to, through those districts, they have a revenue generation mechanism and they plan to work with the county on planning for green space and parks add an additional tax to those residents and that may be something worth looking into for the community. Commenter, let's see, from Andrea, I'm not sure the best manner to answer the question, the question is what has changed in the last six months? The change to the discussion, I think she might be under the impression that the planning commission is in favor of making some changes here where there was unanimous denial six months ago. The big change is that the applicant has requested a different zone, but as you guys will notice that from planning staff's perspective, we haven't shifted on the recommendation that we gave six months ago versus now. We have added a little bit more context to the recommendation, however. Mr. Nelson mentions that the properties in the area built up under the RE15 zone and would like to see this develop the same way. And I mean, that's a, it's a good observation and opinion to have. It's valid. In the context of things, it needs to be balanced with everything else. He's concerned, sounded like one of the primary concerns was traffic mitigation, which obviously is a concern here. Micah mentioned, let's see. Again, traffic, the street configuration does pose a problem and it'll pose a problem for the school children. It's just one more street for them to cross and in close succession where people coming out of this cul-de-sac, you know, may look right or left really quickly and then make right hand turn and not fully see who's standing on those sidewalks. That's a, that's a common conflict when it comes to pedestrian and auto conflicts when intersections are too close together. Let's see, Liz. So I think she was, Liz mentioned a couple of clarifications to what the developer mentioned. I was curious about the same thing. I was going to start counting lots and acreages myself in the surrounding area. So I appreciate some of that clarification. When she mentioned that the properties aren't all third acre lots, they've got quite a few in there that are less and the properties in the area might be just a little bit more. And maybe that kind of depends on how you round your numbers. From, from Mr., excuse me if I slaughter your name, Paul from Mr. Creak, Creakin. The desire to keep zoning as is, just like Mr. Nelson, valid request, valid opinion to have. Rezonating, creating an island of that zone, that's true. And it's like the other R110 zone to the, to the north of this property that was recently rezoned. Both of these, if this one is rezoned, the decision is, has been based on the general plan. However, as you look at the greater community, the greater community has largely built out, with the exception of the few lots that I mentioned in my presentation, it has largely built out of the RE15 zone. So unless we take a bunch of those other properties and also rezone them to one of these other zones, RE15 or, or excuse me, R112 or R110, you know, you'll, you'll have these islands of different zoning out there, that's for sure. And these properties wouldn't, wouldn't have access to agricultural animal uses if rezoned to R112 and R110. That's, that's absolutely correct. I think those are, those are the ones that I found to be something that needed to be answered. Mr. Chairman, did you, did you get any more that I missed there?
No, I think from what I wrote down, I think you pretty well covered everything that I had and wrote down as well.
Any further questions or clarifications based on the comments that I can help with?
Commissioners.
Charlie, Angela had a comment, her question about custom homes. And I don't think you addressed that one.
That was the viability of building custom homes in this, in this particular area, is that right? Yeah, and I don't know if I could answer that question. Actually, I think Mr. Moore made maybe better at directly interfacing the question. It is possible to build very nice, very beautiful homes on these smaller lot sizes. As you saw from the buildable area in the presentation that I gave, there's actually quite a bit of area in all three of the zoning types under discussion to build fairly large homes. So I think you can get that, that value out of it. How do you make the developer do that? Well, you have them put together their concept plan, you create a development agreement and you apply it to the property saying this is what you're going to do. What that does to Mr. Moore though, and more homes is it locks them in. And if the economy changes over the next little bit, or the desirable product changes over the next little bit, he won't be able to shift without coming back and asking if he, if he can. So you can always ask him as a condition of rezone to present. You can go as far as to say, we want to see what building elevation and plan layouts look like. But I wouldn't recommend it. I think it's a, it's a level of burden on the, on the developer that that may be unnecessary if the market is what it is today and can produce the types of homes.
Thanks for addressing that, Charlie.
Yeah, and Mr. Moore may be able to give much better information. He's probably got his thumb a little bit more on the local housing economy than I do. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll mute my mic.
Can I comment on just a couple of those questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Staff covered a lot of them, but I just want to cover a few of these. There's still a perception of some type that these homes are going to be significantly different or devalue the area. We have no intent of that. We would absolutely not want to do that. We, our intent is to build a very nice custom homes that will add to the value on the third acre lots. Our situation at this point is most likely, I think we'll have a balance. We have another builder that I'm working with that there will probably be two of us that will be building and I also believe that we'll have a few individuals or builders. So there'll be a nice mix, but these homes will have a hardy board, stone exterior. Majority, I would say would have three car garages. There's no intent of us, you know, for what we're paying for the property and what we see that the area is already established. With the size of these lots of only 12 lots, it does not help us to somehow diminish that value. We want to enhance the value as much as possible. So I just, I'd want to clear that up. I don't know why there's, I hope there's not a misconception on that. Our intent is absolutely, in every way, this will add to the value. The lots are, as I tried to state very clearly, are very much in harmony and similar and same as the adjoining lots. Now, just a couple of other issues that came up quickly, the general plan. There's been a lot of talk about this general plan, this 1970 general plan. And I've really thought about that and I think what was this area in 1970? That was a long time ago. And most likely we're looking to larger lots or more rural area. If that plan was updated today, as you've talked about, I don't know why there's, there's sort of a perception that maybe it would diminish to a lower density. I think very much what you might see is even a change to, to higher density, but we're still not proposing that. This would be in harmony with exactly what's there. Green space, if you look at our design, that corner that's there, and there's a lot of talk about the intersection. We looked at about, oh, probably three or four different ways to bring that intersection. This is a zoning meeting, but this has come up. It will certainly be handled in the subdivision approval. But I've talked with our engineer, we looked at bringing the road up to the other street and curving it up that way. But we felt that it would be better to bring it into the road that dead ends in the cul-de-sac. There are 12 homes that would be added to that. We're not talking a tremendous amount of traffic. You know, it's interesting. It appears that this property was looked at at one point to build a chapel on it. You know, the traffic for the chapel would much exceed what this is and the road would not have gone through if the chapel had stayed there. But we're looking at 12 homes that would add to that. The children walking to school. You know, we're we're going to put sidewalks on our side, do not exist there. Now, all of those homes will have sidewalks. There's sidewalks all the way around it, all of that. If, you know, I think if there's an issue of traffic, a stop sign could be put there that, that would, would stop the traffic at that point. The green space, if you look at our plan, we kind of have a little peninsula there of on the corner. I don't know if you maybe bring that up. That, that has a little bit of land that, a fair amount of land on that lot that is really not usable in building. We are going to incorporate that into our detention pond. So that is going to stay open. You know, it's not a public space. I, as the staff said, I don't know that the county's in a position to put a small park, but it's, it's going to stay open there with the way that it's configured right at this point. So, you know, my last comment would be as commissioners, I've been to a lot of meetings over the years in many municipalities. And I appreciate what you do as commissioners. It's a tough job. It's a thankless job many times. And, you know, you hear a lot of comment and involvement from residents and neighbors, which you want to have and you want to hear. But I also think that you have to go by your code, by your requirements, as I have stated and shown what the code is. And as a property owner, we have rights also. We are staying well, not even within the general plan, below the general plan. But it isn't even exceed what is existing there. As property owners, we have rights also, and I hope you'll appreciate that and understand that. We are trying to build very nice new homes, new neighbors, bring new families and new people into the community. We have no intent to diminish it. These are not smaller. The homes will fit in and be very nice with new materials and new people moving in. So I would ask your approval and thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Moore. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I just want to revisit the drain that looks like it comes there by the two lots and you're going to turn that and go down the middle of this. But will easement affect the building of the two houses there on those lots? That's for Mr. Moore.
If you can give us control on, we'll pull this plot up. I want to clear up just a couple of things.
Okay.
Our engineers looked at all this. He surveyed everything. He's measured the depths of all the lines. And currently, there is a storm drain. It comes in, it slopes, the property slopes west. So he's, he's looked at it, engineered it. There's plenty of fall. But there's a 15 inch, it's not a large storm drain, but there is a 15 inch pipe that comes down to a box here and then it continues through the easement. Now, one of the neighbors asked, oh, the easements on all these lots, they're going to be unbuildable or something. No. All of that easement, all of that through there, all of that pipe will be abandoned and the easements vacated. So the new pipe will come down, it will, will keep the existing pipe that's there, will put in a storm drain box right here. And then it will come right down the road and tie into the pipe that's right there. So all of that will go in. Now, these lots, as I said, this is the proposed property line, Commissioner, and that's where that pipe is in the center of those dashed easements. So it'll run right through there and then we'll keep this easement on these lots for that, that pipe. There is a sewer main that comes up here and then comes right down the back here and that'll, that'll stay on the back of those lots. But all this will be vacated. And then these two lots, that pipe will come right through there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but thank you for that. I can't see what, what's the width of that road that comes into the cul-de-sac?
This one here?
Yes.
It's 50.
Fifty.
Talked to the county traffic engineer about this. I think another resident asked about that and he cul-de-sac that they would probably be comfortable with the 50 foot.
Okay, all right, good.
There's only, only the 12 homes that are on it.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
That's a 50 foot right of way with what about 37 feet of pavement?
I believe so. It would have a, I think it's a standard design of a five foot park strip, four foot sidewalk curb and then, and then, and then, and then the pavement. Yes, so these will all have, I mean, these lots are all very wide and deep. There's, there'll be park strip and sidewalk. And back to this, just this intersection here. Maybe drag it down just a little bit if you can, because this is interesting. We looked at a lot of designs. We looked at, at just bringing the road up into 6225. Instead of going this direction, we looked at coming this way. Well, this is a little busier road and we looked at, you know, that this would cause a little more conflict here. Coming into this road, this is a dead end cul-de-sac and felt that bringing it to here would intersect better with less traffic. And then like I stated, I've talked to the Weaver County traffic engineers and, and we would have a stop sign here. and we would have a stop sign here, and there, there would be with a little bit of traffic, not, not an issue. He felt comfortable with it. Now, this corner, as I stated, we have this long, or this large parcel here, the home on this lot 12 would be up in here. And all of this is going to be landscaped, and this would be, in this area would be a small detention east basin that's required by state code now. So this is all going to be open through this area here, and on that corner.
So whose responsibility would it be to take care of that detention basin? Is it, do you have a HOA, or just that neighbor?
No, there's a couple of different ways. It's a good question, Commissioner. It's interesting. Another development, I just noticed the other day, I was looking at the plat, and their detention basin, actually, they actually is owned by Weaver County. So we haven't, you know, we haven't got to the point of looking at that, but, you know, it's possible. If the county wanted to take it, we would, we would separate this off of the lot and deed that to the county, or we would leave it as an easement as part of this lot. It is, it's, it's, it's not going to be a very large basin, and it'd just be part of their yard. It might have a, I don't know, you know, a two to three foot depression, and would be part of this lot 12, and they would maintain it and be able to use it. But we're, we're looking at those two options.
Okay. Sometimes those just become a weed patch, so I just wanted to make sure it's had a plan.
We don't want that. We don't want that. And, and, you know, a lot of the homes, like I say, we anticipate, as he's even drawn here, conceptually, you know, this home, 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 you know, virtually all of these will accept a three car garage, and we anticipate that the majority of them would be three car garages and hardy board. They, they would be in, you know, the $550 to $700, $1,000 range. We have to be in that range with what the value of the land is and the value of, of these lots. It's, it's not really possible to take that expensive of a lot and, and, and sell a, you know, build a smaller home on it. We would never, will do that. That answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioners, or either staff or the applicant? Charlie, I got one question, considering on that, doesn't county standard require a 60 foot right of way road?
It does. I didn't know whether or not I should interrupt and, and mention that. So I'm not quite sure which engineer mentioned that 50 feet would be okay. Our, our actual code requires 66 feet, and I do know the engineers have kind of vacillated between 60 and 66 feet. As I look at the proposed lots, I, I don't know that that's going to affect their ability to exist under the R112 zone. And, and honestly, whoever from, from the engineering division might have mentioned, you know, their acceptance of that with, they may not have been fully vetting it through the subdivision code, because this is not a subdivision application. And so it may have, may have been just higher, higher arching conceptual ideas just being fleshed out. Whatever engineering we look at today can change in accordance with the, with the ordinance. I think Mr. Moore mentioned that, you know, we need to focus on what the ordinances say when it comes time to do his subdivision. Today, we're just looking at, at rezoning. Unless there is something specific that we're hoping to get out of the rezone that enhances the greater good, when we're looking at a rezone, we do want to make sure it's developable, yes. But getting deep in the weeds on that, I think limits the developer's ability to respond to the market and provide a product that is sellable. But the short answer to your question is, yeah, the ordinance requires 66 feet right of way width.
Perfect. That's what I was thinking. So I just wanted to.
I do have another question for Charlie.
Yes, go ahead.
On, on your staff recommendation, on the conditions, you're saying the mutual agreement, development agreement executed between the applicant and the developer, is that not the same person?
That is. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That, I mentioned at the very beginning that I've got a correction to the recommendation. It's that. It should be, should be with the applicant and the county. I apologize for that. The, the staff report I emailed out to you just before this meeting started has that correction in it. And, and just for the, the public's information, that in the header is the only thing that changed in that report. Just so it doesn't seem like there's a, a secret report going out there.
All right. Thank you for that, Charlie.
Thanks for, thanks for calling it out.
All right. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, discussion?
I, I have one more question. If it stayed in the current zoning, how many homes would be there if he built them?
It's a, it's a good question. It really depends on his street configuration. I think that Mr. Moore may have already tried to answer that question internally for himself. I don't know, Mr. Moore, if that's something that you'd care to address.
Happy to. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's so much misinformation about this. If it stays in the current zone, oh, do you have that? There it is there. So we've done a conceptual. That is the conceptual based on the RE15 zone. Whoops, sorry. We'll get her back here. Okay. So if we were to stay in the RE15 zone, that is the conceptual that our engineer has drawn. It's 11 lots. Now, they require 100 foot width. In order to accomplish that, as you'll see in the cul-de-sac, to get the 100 foot width, we had to make adjustments and some kinks in some of the lot lines. We don't see that as, as really being advantageous. We can make that design, and that's probably the design we, we would be with, but that's, that's the difference, Commissioner. Now, you say, well, why even do it? Well, when you're talking 10, 11, 12 lots, it makes a difference. With the price of land, the price of improvements, the price of homes, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's not a huge difference. We're not putting ton, many more lots in, but it's a difference of probably one, one lot. So it's, it's just a misconception as to what this change does. And these lots, if it stayed in the RE15, I know it's like, well, that makes it the same as the neighbors. It really doesn't. The way these lots are laid out, if you look at them, maybe zoom in there a little bit, these cul-de-sac lots, I mean, 17,000 feet, seven, two of them are 17,000. The other lot on the corner is, is 16,000. These lots would average, in my estimation, just because of the configuration and the size of, of the property, that's what we have to work with, is the dimensions of the property and the requirements of, of, you know, the 100 foot width, that these lots in that zone would be larger than what the surrounding is. So that's really what it all boils down to. And we feel that the, that the 12, even though it sounds like the change, it is a change, it is really the zone that is most conducive, and so hopefully that answers, Commissioner.
Sure did. Thank, thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. I guess I got another question for Charlie.
That's good.
Okay, Charlie. How, I mean, during this rezone and everything, how, how critical is it to have the stub into the adjacent property there? I mean, just looking at that, and I've never been up to this place and looked at it, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure. But in my mind, I, I, well, first of all, I like the idea of connecting things, but it looks like to me that it is going to crowd the property owner in, on his place if, you know, and I guess it would never come into play until he decided to do development there. But I don't, for, for some reason, it's just not registering with my mind that it's a good deal. So is it or isn't it? Or is it in the eye of the beholder?
It, it, it really is in the eyes of the beholder. There's a lot of science, however, that talks about connectivity and, and community, and the positive correlations between connectivity and quality of life, connectivity and feeling and, and a sense of place. And, and then obviously, there's, that's qualitative data. The quantitative data is connectivity and how much gas goes through an exhaust system. And so you, you, you do get that component of it. The balance that I think you may be asking, the balance question really is a little more subjective. You know, a guy like me doesn't live in the community, works for the community, and is looking for the best outcome for the greater good, would say, get, get the connection if you can get it. Because the neighboring landowner won't always be that landowner. It, it's going to transfer hands at some point in the future, and then that landowner is going to be looking for opportunities. And at that point, once those opportunities are being sought at that time, and this development exists in a cul-de-sac, that opportunity is a burned opportunity, like the other, like the red lines that I showed you in the, in the presentation. So the, I guess, really, to think all the way through it, how important is this to not be a burned opportunity? If we look back on some of those other burned opportunities, one of them is where the school site is. Are we going to consider that a burned opportunity because a school was built where the, the people of the 1970s decided a road should go? Maybe not. The school is essential. It's critical to the community. So I guess that's kind of the, the threshold or, or the way to vet the question. I don't know if I have an answer for you on.
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're talking about there, but as I look down on this thing, I see roads everywhere.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm just, you know, I, I happen to think that he has a really nice, clean-looking development there with that cul-de-sac. But I, I'm, I'm just struggling because within myself, I'm always one worried about, you know, connectivity.
Yeah.
This is, you know, I'm, I'm just really struggling with that. And like I say, I looked this thing, and there's roads everywhere, and I, I don't know whether it cuts off anything. I don't know where the sense of community is going to be. I don't, you know, if there was a nice 10 acre park there, I could see it. But
Yeah.
You know, I, I just, I, I'm just really struggling with that stub there.
Yeah. And Mr. Moore actually said it pretty well himself. He said if that church had gone in, we'd never even look back at whether or not this connection is needed. Can you, can you see my screen right now?
Say again.
Can you see my screen right now? Am I showing it? Can you see where my icon is?
I've, the one I've got, let's see which one is it. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the map right now, yes.
So my presentation kind of gave the, the, the shorter version. I know it wasn't short, but the shorter version of, of the analysis. What you're looking at right here is the existing streets and the planned streets. What's in black? It were, excuse me, is the streets that were existing at the time that the plan was created. What's, the dashed line are the streets that were proposed, and the faint kind of purplish transparent lines are the ones that are there today. And just to kind of, just kind of walk you through for your own sense of understanding on the importance of this connection, whether it is important or not, those green areas, that's the areas we were successful in getting the original transportation plan implemented. Those orange areas here, this is where we deviated a little bit from the plan, but maybe the deviation was fine. And so something that's not immediately clear here is you've got this curve, which is a solid line, which we didn't plan on that curve being there. We planned on it being a through street. And this cross road being here, a, a four-way, a straight four-way intersection, that curve goes up and hits this point right here. The plan called for the road to go all the way through to where this existing road was in 1970. Now, if you'll recall, when we talked about that subdivision that just got the rezone to R110 over here, this solid line is what was actually built. The plan said, all right, cul-de-sac might work okay here, and this should be a connection. However, there's a house right here in a probably multi-million dollar home right here that is not going to go away. And so we lost that connection. And that connection hooks into Combi and goes up further. I forget what this road is called, but, oh, Woodland. It's written right there, into Woodland Drive. So how important, if we followed the plan, would this connection to east would be? I couldn't tell you. But right here, this connection makes it. So the perception that the connection is already there, it's just in a different place, that's a valid perception. Something that it doesn't provide for, which the plan doesn't suggest at all, is this connection here, which then goes on to essentially provide full connections like this yellow line here through the community. If this kind of a connection right here is important to the community, then this link is essential to providing it. If that kind of connection is beneficial some other way by maybe, you know, this line here, going up to here, coming down to here, and then going up there to get to the rest of that community, if that's the way to do it, or more appropriately, the way most people probably travel, is up skyline, since it now makes a connection through and, and hitting Combi at that four-way route about. So there are the different connections that are there. The more connectivity, the better for the community, but sometimes it's not worth the, you know, the long-term ask, the long-term gain on it. Sometimes it's okay to, to go without the connection. So it's a long way to tell you. I don't have an answer for you.
Well, I'm not a road engineer, but it appears to me with 12 homes being built there, it could be most of the traffic isn't from those 12 homes.
Correct.
It could be through traffic.
Yep, absolutely.
And, and that's the problem that I'm getting to, and I guess I should have just spit it out. But I, you know, the way I'm thinking of it right at the moment is, is I don't, I don't want to encumber 12 new homes and a road that's not 66 feet with travel people taking shortcuts.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's where I'm at. So anyway, I appreciate your education on that. Thank you for that.
You bet.
And anyway, I'll have to ponder that. So thank you.
Worth a discussion. Absolutely. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Charlie?
You betcha. Go ahead.
So Charlie, we considered this six months ago. Can you tell me what has changed other than that we received a new application? Has any other pertinent facts changed?
No. No, the, I, I'm not sure whether or not six months ago, we've looked at the potential regional connectivity through this property, how essential connection through this property was to the 1970 plan. But regardless, it's additional information to think about. It may not be something that yields a different result.
Even without the connectivity, we decided, the last time we heard this, that we didn't want to create a, an island of a different zone there, and have them spread all over the county. And we were concerned about the immediate neighbors and the size of their lots compared to the size of the lots in the subdivision. And I realized that we can all get different And I realized that we can all get different numbers by how many houses we include in the area that we calculate with, but. The ones right close to the property seem to be bigger than even he's proposing in the current zoning.
Yeah, nothing has changed from that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Just for the record, I I do know that a neighbor took in a petition to amend this general plan with the fees and. Was ready to start the process to amend the plan just to change it to very low zoning for all of the U N A Highlands area. The planning staff did not accept that petition for some reason or other. They were sent away. After that happened, I I discussed with the planning commission and have. Feedback that that we were all in favor of amending this general plan to have it be very low zoning. For the whole U N A Highlands area. Mister Grover took that to the county commissioners. He's he reported back to the planning commission meeting that they were. In favor of that happening, but didn't want to do a piecemeal. And and now this has happened again, and the the plan is what it was, now what it what it needs to be.
And and maybe there will change after this, Jeanette, Commissioner Borkland, but they wanted to wait until. After Western Weber, the election happened there and they were thinking of doing both of them at the start of the year.
Well, and and in the meantime, we have one or more applications wanting to go to smaller lots because of this plan. It was totally outdated.
Right, and you're welcome to, you know, visit with each one of the county commissioners on that, but that's what they reported to me.
Okay.
Hey, Rick, correct me if I'm I'm wrong. I I think that there was a request to rezone the park. So that it couldn't be developed. I'm not aware of a request to change the general plan that was submitted.
There was a request to rezone the park and we indicated that you need to have the property owner's signature on that in order.
Rejected?
Right.
Rejected for lack of having the property owner's signature?
Right.
Okay.
So because their their petition was to amend the plan and maybe they just misrepresented what the petition was for.
That could have been, but what was represented to us was the piece of property.
Just that property, not the whole plan?
Right.
Okay.
There may have been a little bit of confusion about how the plan and zone work together.
When I when I had heard that they had been turned away and the plan and the petition not accepted, I couldn't understand why. And because and they said that because they weren't the property owner and now I understand, so thank you.
All right, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I I apologize. Could I just address one or two quick issues since this is really affects us? Statement was made by one commissioner, I don't know who it was, what has changed from our previous application of a few months ago? And the staff said nothing. That is not accurate. This is a different zone. We requested a R one ten zone that had fourteen lots in it. We are now requesting an R one twelve zone, and we've eliminated two lots and we've increased the size of those lots. That is not nothing. These lots are larger and they meet. The same size as the neighbors, number one, and I apologize, I'll calm down. But when you tell me that somebody is talking about without our knowledge to rezone our property to completely take away our rights to use that property. And to turn it into a park, that is a taking and is illegal. And it that is not possible.
And that's the primary reason we rejected that that application, Mr. Chairman, and when we say nothing has changed.
I'm sorry, we're within our rights to to rezone and request to rezone and to stay within the general plan, which this isn't even in the general plan, it's below it. So I'm sorry, I apologize. But yes, something has changed and changed from months ago. And we went to the county commission and the county commission was was two out of three in favor of this, but because of the provision we had of the R one ten zone. But because of the provision that I hear now is being changed of the majority of the planning commission, that's being changed. Anyway. Yes, something has changed. We feel that we've made a very significant change. We have eliminated two lots. We have increased all of the other lots. And matched with the neighbors, so want to clear that up. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So so just to clarify, there there was a change, this application or the application that was denied before was an R one ten zone. The applicants now requesting an R one twelve zone, so. Just a clarification on that, Commissioner Park.
Yeah, thank you.
I understand that. I understand the requesting a new zone. I was talking about other external factors that maybe we hadn't considered.
And that was my that was my understanding of the question that Commissioner Park already understood that there was a change to the application.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners. Any further deliberation on this?
Chair, if you decide to take a motion on this tonight, you will need to close the public hearing and decide how you guys want to handle that.
We closed the public hearing a while ago.
Did we officially close it?
I officially closed it a while ago.
There was no motion, but do you do you need to do it by motion?
Yes.
Not by rules. In front of me.
On a public hearing, we need to take a motion on it, I believe, though.
Then we need to fix the the book because it's not inherent by that, so.
On what book? On the rules of order?
In the book that's in front of me that was given to me on how to do this, Mister Wilson.
Yeah, you do need a motion, so.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Do I have a second?
I second it.
You, Commissioner Andyotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous, all right. I need to get a better script, Director Grover.
I'll work on that.
Thank you. Okay, now that they have been corrected there, do any further deliberation on this?
Chair, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
I am ready for one.
I move that we deny the petition to rezone the property from. Our and keep it as the RE fifteen, based on the findings that the southeast, the southeast area comprehensive land use plan. Is outdated and should be void. The proposed reason will not promote the health, safety and general welfare of River County public by offering more affordable lot sizes than surrounding zonings. Surrounding land use does not pose a conflict with the does propose conflict with the proposed zone and the new uses proposed. Or not anticipated to fit in the area harmoniously. The southeast Dogden. Community plan covered. All of southeast Dogden area, not just U N A Highlands and. Was not implemented. There was no plan to implement it and it development happened at RE fifteen and that that development pattern should be respected. Implementing the general plan isolates the existing development pattern of the area. I'm not opposed to this development. I'm not opposed, I'm not totally opposed to our RE, our one twelve. But I just believe we're setting a precedent for future development. If we look at these little piecemeal properties one by one.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Park. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take it to a vote, Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Favero?
No.
Commissioner Borkland?
Yes.
Commissioner Andyotti?
No.
And chair votes no. So we have a. Motion fails to pass.
So we need a new motion to do something different?
We need a new motion.
What was option five, Charlie?
Option five was one of the more extreme options. It was to to table it to get. Greater public input on rezoning a larger swath of the area, so we're not talking about. An isolated island, we're talking about a contiguous area.
Sorry, repeat that option, Charlie, was that?
I'll I'll pull it up.
Just to speak a little bit on it, I mean, I I. I mean, I I think this fits the area. I don't think that, you know, those. Looking at it from the the broader perspective in in my eyes, I I don't see how the the two thousand square feet lot doesn't. Doesn't fit into the neighborhood there. I mean, the the lot size, the home, everything, you know, looks. Running. What's around?
Well, it just it creates an island. It creates a special zone surrounded by R fifteen and then. You're setting a precedence for the next person that wants to come along. Before long, you've changed the zoning of the entire area. And it will have a detrimental impact on those that are immediately surrounding the property. If that one lady that spoke was right, they're over four point seven. Of an acre immediately bordering the property, and so now we're taking it down to point three, three, three. That will have an impact on their valuation.
But we just approved one a year ago similar to this to take it to an R one ten.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't have done that, too.
Right, right. I think everybody's looking at that. That was a mistake. It shouldn't have happened. Not only that, but. That's on an arterial street. It's a different community. It's not surrounded by homes. It's got a school on the west side and vacant property to the to the east.
And I I have concern with the way that the traffic comes out, but I I just I don't see one lot affecting it. I mean, the the layout's not gonna change between RE fifteen to RE or R one twelve. You're talking maybe eight trips, eight vehicle trips per day if you go by an average. You know, so I I had a lot of concern with that, the way that the stuff, the street was gonna tie in in the beginning, but. You know, if it's one lot, I.
So what's your rationale for changing it other than another lot for the developer? I mean, he bought the property with the idea that it was RE fifteen.
No, you gotta, you make a very good point, Commissioner Park.
Well, the thing now that is, is it's within the property rights of the new owner to ask for a rezone. And in this case here, it is, in my mind, thirty or forty homes, that's twelve homes. That's all there's gonna be there on this place. And to the property, if there was a stub road in there, I mean, by the time. They get around to the new general plan, they may be going for higher density instead of lower density. And, you know, in this case, one one lot's not gonna make that much of a difference. And if that meeting house was there, there'd be more traffic there in one day than these guys would have in a week. So I I think that it would be better if it was in this in the plan, but I don't. I'm not buggered up at all by approving it. Going to R one twelve.
I'm not concerned about the traffic either. You're just setting the precedence for all the other undeveloped area there.
That's my issue.
That when it comes for that to develop, you're changing the whole makeup of the area, because they're gonna be right in line to have it changed, too.
Well, and you know what? If they can get it changed, they should do it. That's the way it works. And you know, that's.
Yeah, but it it it's us as Commissioners making the decision. The people that live there ought to have some input into it, not. The seven of us or six of us.
Well. I I agree with all that, Commissioner Park, but in the end, it's one lot. That's all it is.
In this particular subdivision, you're right.
In this particular subdivision, and as as time goes on and the prices keep going up. You're gonna see these third acre lots become quarter acre lots, and then you're gonna see them get smaller than that. I mean, that's just gonna be the economics of the future. And I.
I understand all that, but you've got to think about the people that are currently living there and how that impacts them as well.
One lot.
And the homes that are already there, they're not, I mean, you're not gonna have smaller lots than what are already there. You can't, they're already built out. And had we had we looked at the at the eastwood property more closely and spent some more time looking at. The overall better picture for the whole area. You know, his his petition is based on that approval that we had did last year. And so this, if we approve this, then the next guy that comes along is gonna say, oh, you've done this, you've done that, so now you can do another one.
So.
I'm not opposed to the.
Add something here, you're you're making a recommendation to the county commission for either approval or denial. So you're not approving anything second. Just because something's been approved in the past doesn't require. The planning commission to therefore act in accordance with that. So, I mean, just regarding that property that was approved, there's you're not required, because that was approved, to approve this one. Sorry, and I apologize for interrupting.
I appreciate your comments, Mister Wilson.
And I'm I'm not opposed to the R one twelve as much as I was to the R one ten, but. I'm just worried about the precedent more than anything.
Well, I think the frustration for me is the fact that we're working with a fifty-year-old. Code, general plan.
Right.
And we can't get beyond that. And right in right in the code, it tells us that changes are going to be made to this, even if it was only within the twenty-year period that it was supposed to cover. Well, we're out of that twenty-year period by thirty years now, and we can't seem to get moving forward on a new general plan. The property rights of the people have to stand somewhere, and if they're asking for a rezone. They've come to us in earnest, asking for this rezone, and since we can't get beyond. A thirty-year out-of-date general plan, action has to be taken, whether it's popular or not. And that action in this particular case, based on what Mister Wilson just advised us of, is exactly true for me, for me. Not trying to convince anyone else. But for me, it says that each case is looked at individually, and in this particular case, for me. This will fit into that area perfectly without any undue disruption to anyone. I'd like to see the road a little bit better, but given the configuration of the property, there's not a lot of of alternatives there. If they can make it better as they go forward with the subdivision, part of this, maybe it can be better. But as far as the as the rezone discussion is concerned. This thing's got to continue on. We can't keep dragging our heels over an old general plan. That states that changes will be done to it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Favero, for your comments. I. Very good points. Everyone's made good points.
So. Can we look at the options again?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, the options are whatever we feel is fit. I mean, just.
But but you gave us some proposed.
You can have recommendations.
Yeah, some, yeah.
You know, the the options are are what what we see fit.
Yeah, the options are are really limitless, but I've got the these five ones right here that I just try to narrow it down to to help provide a a final recommendation for you. Let me know when you're ready to change the slide.
So. So if we were to look.
Before you change this, oh, go ahead, Jeanette.
If we were, if we were to look at option three that says to change the subdivision order to eliminate the street connection, if we did that, that would be countywide, not just for this area, right? So that's a concern.
So, so look at your findings on those three scenarios there. First two of them are the findings that it's based on the general plan. That's 50 years old, that none of us agree is of any value. The options or the findings on the first one are that the surrounding lots are built out to an RE15 zone and it maintains the status quo with the existing developments, not based on the general plan.
That's what my motion was, so.
You ready to look at the other two options?
Yeah.
Sure.
Is that the same as the first?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I apologize. This, the updated slide didn't get put in here. This is the one that's in your staff report. So I guess, are you ready to look at the fifth option is the question I should be asking?
Do we want to look at the fifth? I mean, the fifth, the applicant already stated that he wasn't even in favor of the fifth option, so.
The, the fifth option, it, the only difference, I think, between what the applicant is asking for and this fifth option is that there wouldn't be a commitment regarding the connectivity of the street, one way or the other. Planning commissioners, you'll still have full discretion to make a decision on that when he applies for the subdivision. So the only, the only other change is that we're looking at the greater picture. It will require the decision to take longer. And so I can certainly see why Mr. Moore would not want to go that direction. More people you get involved, the, the more challenging it may be to, to make this more broad sweeping change. I think if you had a, a property value financial analyst look at this, I, I think you, we would find that the property values of the area go up because the zoning is more dense. But that's not the only thing worth consideration when, when building a community.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to make, I want to make a motion.
Go ahead.
That we, as a planning commission, forward a positive recommendation to the county commission regarding file number ZMA 2020-00 on the proposed rezone of 4.59 acres. And, and to change the zoning from RE15 to R112 zone. And it is, the general plan allows for rezoning as a finding.
Okay, I got a motion to forward a positive recommendation onto the county commission to rezone this from RE15 to R112. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Faverro. All right. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, call for a vote, Commissioner Park.
No.
Commissioner Faverro.
Yes.
Commissioner Borkland.
No.
Commissioner Andriotti.
Yes.
Chair vote aye, motion passes. Three to two to pass a forward recommendation.
What about the substrate? What does that, do we need another motion on that?
We've been doing this as a rezone. Why do we need to make that as part of our motion? Just out of curiosity, that, that can be handled at engineering, isn't it? Or we're just looking at a rezone?
That's correct.
I thought it was Charlie's recommendation to include it.
I just, yeah, it was on those recommendations, but I don't think that we needed to due to the fact we're just looking at a rezone, not looking at streets and, and stuff. They, they can do that when they apply for a subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, if I could help clarify, but that, that's absolutely right. The idea behind providing a provision for a stub street or non-stub street was actually to loosen the, the current requirement, as I read it in the subdivision code, of providing that connection. However, the ambiguity that is in that paragraph, as pointed out by the, the applicant, may be able to prevail as opposed to providing a separate development agreement. And so that's a perfect decision for the future.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Well, Director Grover, we're past our time limit. Do we need to go on with these public hearings because they were posted for tonight?
We have noticed them. They will probably take, they're not going to obviously take as long as this. I would think probably about 15 minutes each, but I don't know where you're at time-wise. I know we went over time.
Commissioners, what's your feelings?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not a commissioner. I just wanted to let you know that we do have people in the audience here for this item, just in case that sways the decision.
Well, I would recommend that we hurry and, well, not hurry, but let's, let's go through this. Any commissioners against that?
That's fine.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is going to be item 4.2 ZTA 2020-06. We're going to have a public hearing to consider and take action on a proposal to amend Lieber County Code, Chapter 104-3 and 108-7, among other parts of the code, if applicable, to allow the cultivation of medical cannabis in an A2 zone. Oh, we did this.
We did it in other zones, but not in the A2 zone. And Charlie will explain the details of this.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Grover. Charlie, it's time.
Thank you. So, um, as you're looking at the proposed language, it's actually fairly simple. So really, this comes down to whether or not the planning commission is comfortable allowing cannabis cultivation in the A2 zone. If you recall the discussion we had about, again, probably half a year, a year ago or so, we limited, we limited processing, excuse me, we limited a cannabis production establishment, which includes, the definition of that in state code includes processing, it includes cultivating, and it includes testing facilities. We allowed it in the A3 and in the M3 zone, at least that was the recommendation from the planning commission. The county commission looked at the M1 and M2 zone, and they had specific requests from members of the public to allow, at the very least, the processing and testing to occur in the M1 and M2 zone. And so that did get implemented in the change, as you can see in number two here. Number three is the, the primary area of the code that'll be changing, that essentially provides for cultivation only in the A2 zone. So just to refresh you on cultivation, it's got to be inside of a building. The building has to be secured. There are certain security requirements and cameras and whatnot required by state code. And, and so the reason we didn't evaluate this for use in the A2 zone at the time was because A3 was easy pickings and we were required to choose at least one agricultural zone for this to be located in. The applicant is not asking for the full cannabis production, just the cannabis cultivation in the A2. I didn't put a tremendous amount of time into this recommendation. I'm, I'm good either way, primarily because the applicant did a pretty good job presenting their case in their application and they were the ones who suggested this language be forwarded. So you got this section here and then you got the next section down, which essentially it affects permitted uses in the A2 zone. And it just adds in cannabis cultivation, not cannabis facility. What was the state code? Cannabis production establishment is what is listed in those other zones in the M3 and A3 zone. They are proposing that cannabis cultivation facility be proposed as defined by state code, which limits what they can do there. The standards applicable in the A3 zone would all still be applied. They are asking for the 100-foot setback to be reduced to 50 feet. There may be debate on that. We did talk about the 100 feet and how it's important. But, but maybe minds have changed since we're now good six months further along into this. Any questions for me?
So Charlie, we put it in the agricultural zone because we were required to by state law, right?
Yeah, by state law. Yes.
At the time we did that, we didn't want to put it in there because our agricultural zones allows for residential, right?
Right. Yep. That's, that's correct.
And our intent was to force it all to manufacturing zone since the 20-acre requirement?
As much as possible to encourage it to be located in manufacturing zones, yes.
Okay, so this doesn't meet any of that intent that we had?
No, it doesn't. And we were primarily looking at the entire production establishment definition at the time. Instead of piecemealing into certain types, it wasn't until we got to the county commission that we piecemealed out cultivation and said it's not allowed in the manufacturing M1 and M2 zones. And so I think now it's further request to piecemeal it out. But, yeah, the original evaluation, if, if it was intended that cultivation does not occur in any other zone than the A3 zone or the M3 zone and requiring A3 to have a lot of acreage and setback requirements, that's still valid, I think, for the consideration of the planning commission.
But Charlie, can you give me a little light on, so now we're wanting to move it into a probably more likely higher residential zone? Why would we want to change that setback to 50 feet then?
That's the request that the applicant has given. When I, when I made my recommendation for approval, it was shortly after getting done with the staff report for the, the more rezone. I think I had a little mental fatigue and I missed the 50-foot setback. I probably would have provided you a better analysis there. If you notice in the application, this has been submitted by the Pinea greenhouse facility that's out there. They do have a location on the property where they would like this to be located. I think there are other opportunities on the property, but this would be 50 feet from the, from the property line would be in something that they're asking for and in their best interest, I think.
One more question. Maybe you covered my spaced out for a minute or something, but why are we taking medical out of this and just putting cannabis cultivation in here?
So that's actually something that Mr. Wilson suggested. He's, he mentioned that in the state code, it actually doesn't say medical cannabis. It says cannabis. And so he's, he's suggesting we be consistent, which if you're looking at, I mean, we still have, you know, medical cannabis listed a couple of different times. If you're comfortable with the idea of this, you want to reset the threshold here to 50, keep it 100, take 75, whatever you choose to do. What I forward over to the county commission will go through all of the different sections and take the word medical out and just have it be cannabis production facility. So that all would have been presented for you here. I apologize. I just simply ran out of time to get everything put together.
Oh, I appreciate that. No, that makes sense. So.
Charlie?
Yes.
I have a question. So I'm looking at the map, the, the Google map that shows where, where their intended area for this is. Is, is that, okay, so it looks like it's, it's actually not on their property. Is it their intention to buy this property where, where the little subject arrow is at? Or is it across the fence on their side, 50 feet away from the fence line to the west of that, you know, to the west of where that subject arrow is?
So the subject arrow is intended to represent the property boundary, not the location.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's actually on their, the property on the west side of the, of their property line then?
My understanding, it's this area in here that they hope to have it. I'll let Mr. Gold or Mr. Gom represent that more accurately. Their minds might have changed a little bit. I, I will give you a little bit of history behind the discussion that I had with Mr. Gold, the owner of Pinea. The original request was to change the property to the A3 zone so that they could do it, which, I mean, that would cut the density potential in half. There may be some great benefits to the community in, in doing that. But there are a number of property owners just behind him before that becomes a, a connected zone with the existing A3 zone. I, I mentioned it might be a little more challenging and it might be a little more direct on, you know, provide a little bit more of a direct focus on the property if we did that. And so looking at changing the code, I think, was a little more of a simple, simpler option for him. That said, we can, we can always look at changing the zone instead.
No, I, I'm not even going down that road. I don't have a problem with it being in the A2 zone. I, I was just kind of going by what I was, I was misguided on. And I really don't care in their facility where they put it. That's, that's not really a concern of mine, but, but the only question I had is why the change from the 50 to 100 feet? That's why I correlated it with it being near that easterly fence line there and where that subject arrow is. And, and why, why are that, you know, why the request for the, the 50 foot from 100 foot? I think that's kind of a question that everybody has.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's just the existing constraints of the property is probably why, but I, we can let Mr. Gold speak to that a bit.
Okay, Commissioner, any more questions or comments for staff? All right. Mr. Gold, I think I still see you on here.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I know, yeah, Brian Gold, one of the owners of Pinea Greenhouses. And the reason for the 50 feet versus the 100 feet is that that would allow us to locate closer to the west side of our property. The west side of our property borders basically wetlands and land that will be basically eventually a conservation. So allows us to put it farther down there in the property. And, and overall, this is a pretty minor change. It's kind of cleaning up a little bit. The county ordinance was passed back in February. It's, it's separating cultivation from production and processing. There'll be no sales on the property, no extraction, no processing, no packaging. We would be growing for one of the existing permit licensees in the state is, and the, the allow, amount of allowable greenhouse space that would be allowed by the state is, is less than 6% of our total greenhouse area. We've got well over a million square feet of greenhouse out there. The state law only allows up to 100,000 feet. This, from a security point of view, it's very heavily regulated by the state. Apparently, we're growing industrial hemp out there under, under a permit from the state and on a small part of our greenhouses. And if the industrial hemp, from all physical appearances, is the same, we'd have to comply with, with the medical cannabis to all of the very stringent state requirements. Would, would, there'd be no additional traffic created with this. We would create some new jobs. And you know, the current ordinance lumps together cultivation and processing. We're deciding these to be split apart. Again, the 50 feet is to, it becomes consistent with all the other lot requirements and everything in an A2 zone. It would allow us to go all, all the way to our west end of our property, which would bury, bury it away from, you know, you know, any, you know, any, any public eye. So I think it's, it's a pretty simple change. It's, it's a housekeeping change. I know that we've been told is that the, that the initial demand for product is, is exceeding that, which. Demand for product is is exceeding that which the state originally projected. And so this allows for production, which is really a lot more environmentally friendly than. Putting it in a warehouse, which has. Very high energy demands because we'd be growing of off season and under natural light. So it's just basically, it's a pretty simple housekeeping change. And one of the issues that you go farther west into the A three zone is that. Though it might move it farther away, we're considered, we've got over eighty acres of land here, but if you move to the A three zone and. It's very limited limiting is to the utilities that are available in the A three zones as you go west. So though, you know, it might look good on paper, from a practical point of view, it becomes very difficult for anybody to. Locate a facility there is. You know, the counties required to by state laws, so I, you know, I might. Defer to. Seth Grom who. It represents the licensee. He might have a comment or two.
Go ahead there.
Alright. Am I live?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Record place.
Yeah, sure. My name is Seth Gom. I'm an attorney at Spalding Law. In Pleasant Grove, and I actually specialize in cannabis law. We, as a firm, we have about ten thousand billable hours in this industry, primarily in other states, so it's kind of interesting for Utah law firm. We've been involved in a lot of the. Changes that have been happening. I've I presented to a number of cities and counties in the state to help advise them. As they craft their ordinances and things like that. I I echo everything that Brian has said. I think this is a great site because. It is well insulated from those residential areas and and other places that we're looking at and even other places that currently have. Active cultivation sites. You actually have residential zones that are more compact, that are closer to those areas. This has a huge amount of land, a huge buffer around it to help insulate that. And I don't think that anyone would know any different, especially with cannabis already being grown there. That's industrial hemp. Because like Brian said, it it looks the same, smells the same, it's the same sort of impact. The only difference you can tell is if you were to run a lab test on it. As he said, the state has quite an increased interest in it. It may be interesting for you to know that Weber County is the third highest count of patients in the state. And that's only following Utah County as number one, which is also interesting in my mind. And then Salt Lake County is second. So you already have a lot of patients there that rely on this medicine and, you know, you can go into the. The public impact on that and the good that it does on helping people. Get off opiates and get off other drugs that could take their life. According to the Department of Health, this has been the number one reason why it's been prescribed is for pain. So it's, I I think it's it's a good direction for the the county to go in. We're respectful of all of our neighbors wherever we go. I think. One thing that you may want to consider as well is as an attorney, when I came across ordinance one oh four. Seven dash two, which is in the A two zone. Section, it actually says that agricultural, I'm sorry, agriculture is the preferred use in the A two zone. All agricultural operations shall be permitted at any time, including the operation of farm machinery and no agricultural use. Shall be subject to restriction because it interferes with other uses permitted in the zone. And so I think. What, as I read through the staff reports, I went through and looked at everything I could. To see what you guys had already done, and I really respect it. You took a cautious role. And wanted to make sure you're doing what's right for the the county residents. And I think this is also a cautious step. It it meets the demand of patients who need medicine in the state. The demands of the state that they have on licensees. If we're not able to meet those demands, they'll issue additional licenses and you'll have additional parties looking to. Set up operations throughout the state. And so I think it's good that we're limited in the number of licenses that are there. And make sure we have responsible operators like Pania to. You know, make sure everything is done correctly and that has a longstanding relationship with the community. Rather than just come in and pop something up and you don't know where these people are coming from. I know that Pania has been around since nineteen fifty three. This is a longstanding member of your county. And they're a great partner and and I'm excited to work with them. And I'm I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that the state law in a lot of respects is more stringent than even your ordinances. For zoning setbacks. And I'm happy.
So this is, I I do have a question or I guess a concern. Apparently, our our code online is not updated, but back in February or maybe it was late January. The the county commission amended. The agricultural zone two to state that it was primary agricultural and primary residential. That was the the main purpose for that. Or the intent of that zone is to be, and and so my concern is with. Under Utah code four dash forty one A two oh one. It says that a person may not locate a cannabis production establishment within thousand feet of a community location or in or within six hundred feet. Of a district that the relevant municipality or county has zoned as primary residential. What are your thoughts on that, Mr. Mr. Gom?
Yeah, so as we've worked with other municipalities and counties. It's an important distinction to know that they actually dictate in there how that's supposed to be measured. And so it's measured as the the most or a common path of of. Of travel. It's not as the crow flies. It's not a direct line. And so when you start adding that up, because you have to go out onto a street, go back around and then access whatever the the entry is to the facility. Not just the boundary. Then it becomes less of an issue. However, I respect the spirit that that was made in and obviously we need to protect residents and.
Well, and there I my concern isn't necessarily the six hundred feet, but that it says. In. So it's in or within the six hundred feet. And so, I mean. There may be an argument that could be made that, well, it's not primary residential, it's primary residential and agricultural. I I don't know and that.
Yeah, and and that's come up before. And it's a bit of an interpretation. As I've worked with other governments. It's not something that we're out to fight on, you know, and obviously. We look to you to be interpreting that in your own county. However, we've had the Department of Agriculture show up to those meetings as well and make sure they clarified on behalf of the state. What that meant. And to them, it was primarily residential. But there are some facts that are compelling. So if you had a mixed use and then you had like a and. An urban type setting, urban type neighborhood out in a agricultural zone. They'll not reasonably should be treated differently than having, you know, lots like this that are very large. I don't know how large they are, but. They look to be at least an acre or more. And in most places, you're always going to have some houses that are within that area that are.
Right.
Residential.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, are you there? You're good. I just I just wanted permission to speak to the commission, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I think this does speak right to Commissioner Park's concern. And one of the things that we vetted at the time. When we were looking at this, this code change was what zones are we going to call primarily residential? Because right now, the the A one and the A two zones, they're they're evolving into residential zones, even though agriculture is the. Preferred use. And so we we can kind of nip this in the bud right now if we're comfortable saying that the A two zone isn't a primarily residential zone. We did make this change that it is primarily a low density rural residential zone. Because we were trying to focus on the A three zone. And and not defining that as a residential zone. But if the planning commission is comfortable calling the A two zone just an agricultural zone and sticking with the A one zone being primarily residential. Or primarily low density, low density rural residential zone, we can always make that change as part of this. Basically, it just gets in and and changes this to revert back to what it was.
And I have that ordinance in front of me. It actually one oh four seven one states the A two zone is both. An agricultural zone and a low density rural residential zone. And so from my experience with other governments. That has been not, it hasn't quite fit the primary residential language that the state law had. And so it probably deemed to be insufficient to be a primarily residential zone with being low density rural residential.
Charlie, did I miss something? No, didn't you say that the commission? Renamed for agriculture and residential? So can the planning commission? You know, go over what they've done?
No, what you can do is you can ask them to reconsider it. And that's essentially, when you're looking at this right here, you're only looking at making a recommendation to the county commission anyway.
Right.
They don't need to be the ones to make the official change. And so if you if you say, hey, we we rethought this, we have a specific request in the A two zone and. We're comfortable with this being located in the A two zone. We make that tweak in the language here, get it in front of the county commission and have them determine whether or not they're comfortable in the same way.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, still, okay, I'm not muted. Alright, commissioners, anything? Anything further on this before we? Before I accept a motion to go into a public hearing? Is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, well, entertain a motion to open the public hearing to consider and take action on a proposal. To amend Weber County Code. One oh four dash three and one oh. Eight dash seven.
Well moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now in a public hearing for this. As in our last public hearing. We're going to go through this and if you wish to speak on this matter. On the participants, just push the raise your hand and we'll call on you. Does anybody wish to speak on this matter? I see a few people, but I don't see no hands. Alright, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Well moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that passes. So. Now, any commissioners, any questions, concerns, comments we can make on this?
Chair, I'm just concerned that we're going against. The intent when we put the ordinance in place. We wanted to move all this to the manufacturing zones and keep it out of areas where there's residences. There's a home ten feet from the gate to this property and several homes along the road going into it. I don't think this meets the intent of what we were trying to accomplish.
I agree. I that are, I agree. I've got a concern, you know, I. Even if it did go in here, I mean, dang sure, I the fifty foot thing, I mean, that was. That was put in there to keep it, to leave this, to change it from a hundred to fifty feet. I mean, that was to give us some good. Boundary space on there and. You know, so it didn't come up closer, that much closer to boundary lines. I mean, I. I could see that, you know, that property might never develop to the to the west there that that you're. On it, but in the same sense, you know, when we amend this code, this could go somewhere else and and it could go. They they could, you know, then put it there, right?
There have been several new houses along that road just in the last two or three years. So it is starting to develop somewhat.
Let me make one comment and is the, you know, the fifty feet. You know, most, almost all of our greenhouses are are in excess of that and. The the closest we would be to the house on the on the fifty or on fifty one hundred west would be well over a thousand feet away. And if you want to go to the houses on the south, you know, using the state's calculations, we're well over a thousand feet away, so. You know, if if. You know, the fifty feet is just an issue to, I know if it. If it becomes an issue where someone built builds a house, then the then the then the law would require that we either put a. An eight foot block wall up or a significant berm up. So that's that's already in the ordinance, so. You know, but the the fifty feet just makes it, you know, consistent with the other. Setbacks that we have existing on A two right now for all our buildings.
And to your point, that's a five hundred foot distance, as you can see on that ordinance in front of you. From any residential use. And so it's it's far. And so I had assumed once that residential use were to pop up on that west side, they would have to conform to that five hundred feet.
Yeah, right now on the west side, NRCS is. Has got an option to convert all of that hundred and twenty acres west of us into a permanent conservation easement. So. You know, John De Giorgio, who wants the property there, that's that's, you know, he's in the process of that would all convert. To. A conservation easement, so. You know, at the at the fifty feet on the west property becomes an issue, then we could, you know, you could modify it to be a hundred feet to the west, but. You know, I thought it was, I our our thinking was if that was a good idea, this is it would nestle it closer to a a wetland. Where it would be even more secure.
Thinking back on the conversation we had when we passed that for the M one and M two zone, it seemed like to me that part of that conversation was about. Processing and testing where there would actually be emissions. Am I correct?
As I recall, we wanted to all go to that manufacturing zone and keep it out of our residential areas.
I and I know that, and I agree, I know that that was part of the conversation also, but I think that 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 what lent. More heavily to the M one, M two zone was be was more for processing and testing because of the emissions.
Well, I don't know that we knew the difference at that time. I mean, it was all brand new. The state come out and said you had to put it. In any man, in a manufacturing zone and in an agricultural zone. And we didn't know enough about it to to differentiate between the two at that time.
Well, I'm not as concerned about about the growth being in in an A zone. I I would be concerned about any processing.
That's a good point, Commissioner Faverro. I mean, does that? In this process. I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. I mean, the the state, from what I recall, from the the one that. Was here pre or that was previously out Westwell Street, they it has to be grown inside. And there's a bunch of requirements as far as that goes. Is that correct? So it doesn't ever get grown outside or does it?
So outdoor is allowed, but it's not a favored use. It just has too many risks of ruining the plant and having, where this is pharmaceutical grade. Medicine, you have to have a lot of environmental controls. And so it's technically allowed, but I'm not aware of anyone who's going. medicine, you have to have a lot of environmental controls. And so it's technically allowed, but I'm not aware of anyone who's going that direction just because of that. And then if it was allowed, it's maxed out at four acres. And this is an 85-acre parcel. And so it'd be very well considered if that were the case, but we have no intention of doing that.
No. And I think the other issue is, is like, and I read through the state law today, the state law is very clear between processing and cultivation and testing. Those are all three different things where the county ordinance currently kind of lumps them together. This change in the county ordinance would, would change, would separate the processing from the cultivation.
That's right. They are separate and distinct licenses with the state.
There'd be no material processed here on the property at all. It'd be all harvested here, taken into the salt lake to their facility and then processed there.
You know, the bigger concern for me on this, no matter where it's at, is, is the security. And, you know, I've seen your, your operation over there. And I'm sure you'll, you'll heighten what you've done and you've got a, a nice fence with, that's taken care of. And, and so that, that part of it, i- is the, is where the concern comes is, is that some of the growers that are growing the hemp in the open areas have had some problems. Fences have been cut. You know, that kind of thing. Kids thinking they're getting something that's not really what they're, you know, what they're getting. When you're a kid, you don't know or don't care the difference. But in fact, that's happened right near where I live. In fact, cut one of my fences to get to it. That, that's my biggest concern. I no matter where this goes, if somebody gets wind of where it's going, somebody's going to try and, and do something stupid to get to it. And so my, my biggest thing is just, you know, is, is, is the security of, of someone not being able to get to it or get hurt trying to get to it. You know, that kind of, that kind of thing.
As you can talk to the security requirements by the state, they're incredibly stringent for this crop.
They are. Fact is, when we looked at using this site, we estimated that we'd have to probably add another $20,000 to $60,000 in security enhancements to make sure we are compliant. And we go on above and beyond what the state wants because to that same point, we don't want anybody breaking in there either. And so even in light of that, we've, we, at other facilities that we've, we're at, we've looked at police officers, off-duty police officers, officers that will come by at the night and look at it and just make sure that everything's safe. We use cameras all over the place. Every single entrance has to have a camera. There'd be additional fencing that would have to come in. It, we take it pretty seriously and it's, it's worth the investment. And even if you put it over in an A3 zone or an M1 zone, they're not afraid to just drive two more miles to get to it either way. And so wherever it goes, we have to take those efforts and we have to be very serious about it. And we are.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just a point of clarification. Can you see the state code on your screen over here?
Yeah.
Okay, so at the time that we were looking at vetting this, I actually don't, I don't recall how detailed we got with the planning commission on what exactly a cannabis production establishment is. Oh, I have agent here, cannabis production establishment. I don't recall if we dived into those details. I do recall once questions started to arise before we got to the county commission, I know we dived in to kind of see what, how we can separate these things. And, and there was an agency who wanted to move in or a company that wanted to move into the manufacturing area on Ruhl and White Boulevard. And they were the ones who definitely brought it to our attention that, you know, there are these three different distinctions. I do know that before the planning commission reviewed it though, myself and our, our attorney sat down just to make sure that we were in the know. And a medical cannabis production establishment means these three things. And so as we were looking at placing this into our code, we were combining cannabis cultivation facility, cannabis processing facility, or an independent cannabis testing laboratory. So it could be one or all of those three things, depending on what kind of state licenses they had. That's the primary reason why we looked at the A3 zone and the M3, or A3 and the M3 zone. Because as far as we understood, the way the state code is intended to be applied, you had to allow for a cannabis production establishment in an agricultural zone and in a manufacturing zone if the jurisdiction had one or both of those zones. Where we're able to kind of piece, I'm going to say piecemeal, divide out, provide a little bit more specificity on these different types of facilities. For example, cannabis cultivation facility. You could see is defined here, processing facility is defined here. We were able to kind of pull them apart as we looked at the M1 and the M2 zone. Whereas while the planning commission was looking at this, they were only just looking at cannabis production establishment as an entire thing because the state code required us to look at that as an entire thing. Here we are going above and beyond what the minimum requirement, or at least, sorry, here we are look, being requested to go above and beyond what the minimum requirement is and look at further pulling these apart to allow something in the A2 zone that is not cannabis production establishment. It's actually a cannabis cultivation facility. So one of the individualized components of a cannabis production establishment. I hope, I hope that makes sense.
So are those definitions defined in our code as well?
No, our code refers to state code when we're talking about definitions. So if you look at what the applicant has proposed in the M2 zone, it says cannabis cultivation facility as defined by state code. Which is just the, the reference right back to that section that I was, I had pulled up. And the rest of our codes do the same. The A3 zone, the M3 zone, the M1 and M2 zones all do the same.
So would this be a permitted use in this?
Yeah, per, permitted with, I believe, well, hang on. How did we do, how did we do that?
Yeah, it was a permitted use by, by that, yeah, that section right there.
Yeah, permitted use, that's right.
I would feel more comfortable, especially being a conditional use, not just a permitted use in there. So at least we have the ability to look at it, put it under a conditional use permit. Is that an option?
Absolutely.
Well, I, let me just speak to that really quick. My concern with doing that is we want to keep as low a profile out here as possible. The state so heavily regulates this. Our concern is, is you go through the process of a conditional use hearing, you end up at the same place with the same result. And then all of a sudden, you basically advertise to some of the nefarious people where it's going to be. Or in this particular case, you're changing, we're requesting a change of the countywide ordinance, which would allow us at least some degree of anonymity and along with that anonymity, hopefully potentially less of a concern with security. The state law specifically does not allow a cannabis cultivation facility to advertise. One of the things when we talked to Charlie about that was is, you know, you're starting to go to a conditional use to some of the things like this. It became, becomes an advertisement to the nefarious people for something that is very heavily regulated and by the state as far as security and everything else like that. So.
I appreciate your concern about wanting to keep it, you know, out of the public's view. But there's also the concern that we have that if we change the ordinance countywide, then it could go in anywhere in one of those zones.
Well, I think that, that certainly could be a concern. Your point's well taken. But where there's only eight licensees in the state, I think it really limits where they're going to go. You know, almost half of them are in Box Elder County. The advantage we would have here is we have existing greenhouse structure that allows for very efficient production. One of the mandates from the state is, is to provide for the licensee to provide for is lower cost production so that the patients have as low a cost access to the medication as possible. With what we're proposing here, this allows us to, this particular licensee to be is is very, very efficient in, from a cost point of view in dealing with this product. In reality, Weber County, we're the only large, real large greenhouse in all of Weber County. And so the coming to build additional greenhouses becomes a very, it's not only a very expensive proposition, but from, it's like somebody saying, well, I'm going to go buy 100 acres of land, buy some tractors and everything else, and I'm going to become a farmer. That just does not happen. And it's the same thing here. We provide a, we have a unique expertise that we think can help benefit the state, but also provide us with, you know, some alternative crop options too.
Mr. Chairman, there's always the option under 3A in the proposed to say the minimum lot area in the A3 zone is 20 acres. The minimum lot area in the A2 zone is, and then give a different threshold. Paineia currently sits on, it looks like, and, and Mr. Gold, tell me if I'm wrong, about 75, a little over 75 acres. I mean, you could bump that up to 50 acres, you could bump it up to 75 acres. That, that significantly limits other locations where it can occur.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a little over 80 acres. I'm not sure exactly, 82, 83, somewhere in that range. So, yeah, that, that would certainly be an option, which, you know, I know when we first moved out here 15 years ago, we moved from Centerville, it was hard to find any piece of property that was suitable to build on that was over 50 acres. They just don't exist.
Looking at the packet on page, well, I've, I've got the separate one, so I'm on page 19. But that map shows 83.49 acres.
No, I, that's, that's, I think, Mr. Gold, you brought up a very good point to me. I mean, I didn't think about that. There's, there's only eight licenses. I mean, I, I think that's, until the state releases more licenses, you're right. I, I don't know if I mean, this being a permitted use, I don't think that there's going to be a bunch of people jumping down the
Well, Brad, but they, the, the attorney, I forget his name, I don't have it up on my screen, said that the state has, did not anticipate the demand. And that's why they're trying to get into it. So it could be entirely possible the state could issue more licenses if the demand outpaces the supply.
That's true.
Right now, the state law only allows a maximum of 10 licenses. They've issued eight of them. And so one, I think one of the thinking is, is by, by granting this, this would allow enough extra production to somewhat limit this from a competitive point of view out there. You know, getting people, the majority of the licensees are people from out of state.
That's right. And, you know, we're, we're all from Utah. So we're, we're interested in the, in making sure we do what's right for Utah. It's, and just to qualify, qualify my other statement, what I meant was there's only eight issued licenses. The state has a higher demand, but this program has rolled out very quickly, as we're all aware. And it's been really difficult for all parties involved to grapple with that. And so to, to hit the ground running with 100,000 square feet of cultivation space is near impossible. And so most of us have smaller grows that we're working on and we're expanding out, but it takes time. But the, the popularity for patients has been quicker than anticipated. And so it's not a question of whether 800,000 feet in the state is enough. It's whether the amount that we have today is enough to meet today's demand. And that's what, you know, Brian is offering with his greenhouses. They're ready to go. It increases production. Therefore, it reduces the state's interest in issuing more licenses because we're maximizing the licenses that we're given.
So who, who actually holds the license?
In this situation?
Yes.
It's Zion Cultivars that's interested in it, but certainly it could be other licensees that, you know, Brian could work with.
Yeah, I think the two things to realize here is that the maximum, if, if we maxed out on this, it'd be about less than six, it'd be around 6% if we maxed out our part of our existing production space. And it's not like we're a land developer where we're developing a subdivision, selling the lots up and moving out of town with our money. We live, we have to live with whatever we have out here. So from a security point of view, getting along with our neighbor point of view, we want to be a good neighbor. You know, we're interested in this crop because, you know, a lot of the other agricultural crops out there are very depressed. So this is interesting. It plays into our area of expertise, but whatever, whatever, you know, the county happens, we have to, we live with this. We're, we're not moving out of town. And it's still, it's still from a square footage point of view, a pretty small point, a small part of our footprint. You know, our primary business is growing flowers, trees, shrubs and predigos.
What if we were to, to tighten the proposal up, have a, sorry, I lost, lost the screen where I was. Have a minimum acreage requirement that's more than the 20 and maybe a maximum area of coverage of the entire parcel of, I don't know, just going off of what Brian mentioned, 6%, but maybe, you know, maybe it's 10% just to give Brian wiggle room in the future.
The state, the state right now heavily regulates how much square footage you can have. So that's, that's not an issue. As far as increasing the, this, from a 20-acre site to a 50 or 60-acre site. I think that makes sense. I think if you went as high as an 80-acre site unless you go to some of the big farms to the south and north, as they were to totally sell the farm, which I don't see the farmers doing, it's geographically impossible to locate in, in West Weber County. It just, the, the land, the contiguous land over 50 acres just only exists in just a few farms. We found that when we moved here from Centerville. It, it's just, and, and even more so that to find 50-plus acres with wa, with water that can be used into a greenhouse is, is, is almost impossible. The reason we, one of the primary reason we located here was a large piece of flat ground, but years ago, when there were turkeys out here, they must've been pretty thirsty because there was a real significant underground water right attached to this property for those thirsty turkeys.
So it may be self-limiting by environmental.
Well, I, I like the concerns with that. What about a, could we put a, I mean, if, if state code allows for it to be grown outside, could we put something in our code that, that required it to be grown?